Good evening, welcome to tonight's Board of Education meeting. One second here, I will now call to order the May 2nd, 2024 Board of Education meeting. We acknowledge the traditional ancestral unceded territory of the Chumash Tongva Fernandoño Tatavaim and First Nations on which we are learning, educating, and living. If he feels so inclined, I'd love to invite up the fabulous Principal of Luther, Mr. Stephen Humboldt, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you are able, please rise.
Please stand, everyone. Right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you so much. Ms. Cuterio, please take the roll call at this time.
Member Ferguson.
Present.
Member Tabit.
Present.
Clerk Ponsor Kamkar.
Present.
Vice President Aga Khanian.
Present.
President Weisberg.
Tonight, we will adjourn in the memory of Shelley Brown. As we, so, this, Ms. Q, do I read this at the end or now? Now. As we close tonight's Board of Education meeting, we will pause to honor and remember Shelley Brown, who passed away in April 15th, 2024. Born and raised in Los Angeles, Shelley dedicated her life to the noble art of teaching, spending nearly four decades teaching the Los Angeles Unified School District. Her daughter Jen Culbertson worked in Burbank Unified for 27 years, from 1996 to 2023. Shelley profoundly impacted the lives of her students, many of whom followed in her footsteps into the world of education, including Jen. Shelley trained 22 student teachers from CSUN, instilling in them the passion and values she held dear. Shelley was not only a remarkable teacher, but also a cherished member of the Burbank Unified School District community, contributing her expertise long after retirement. Her dedication extended into her volunteer work at Providencia Elementary, where, under the leadership of Jen as Principal, she assisted in classrooms, working closely with students in one-on-one settings and in small groups. Her commitment and kindness did not go unnoticed. Teachers like Linda Lorenz and Alicia Wallerton cherish the years they had with Shelley, helping in their classrooms. Shelley's legacy is carried on by her loving family, her daughters Jen and Devon, sons-in-law Dan and David, and her adored grandchildren Ben and Ruby, who brought her immense joy. Beyond her professional and family life, Shelley was an avid supporter of UCLA, a passionate traveler, and a firm believer in the transformative power of education. Her spirit and legacy will continue to inspire those who had the pleasure of knowing her and learning from her. Tonight, as we remember Shelley, we reflect on a life beautifully lived and a contribution deeply felt. Her legacy will remain a guiding light in this community, inspiring future generations to pursue education with passion and purpose. Shelley Brown will be profoundly missed, but her impact will endure. Move on to item five, there are no actions taken during closed section. We will move on to item six, adjustments to the agenda. Does anybody have adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, Madam President, I'd like to pull 13E. We will bring that back at our next board meeting.
Okay.
And I'd like for you to consider moving 8C to right before 8A.
If there are no objections from my colleagues, we will go ahead and make those adjustments. Thank you, Dr. Paramo. Item seven, items for future agenda. Mr. Ferguson.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So, I actually have three.
Sure, go for it.
Okay. So first, we've talked about vaping as an issue, obviously, we've heard it a lot from parents and teachers and administrators who are dealing with a real epidemic, but there's other issues related to drug treatment, there's other issues. This is not a time for us to start new programming, but this is a time for us to consolidate, to get all of our resources gathered, and to talk about what our internal strategies are, external strategies are, to support young people who are facing addiction and battling that. So I would just like permission and kind of a nod from the Board to establish a working group that can kind of work with Ms. Markison and the school nurse to kind of identify what these resources look like and look at our strategies internally to manage those, and whether or not we need any policies to answer some of those needs.
So, for, just to clarify, so for the future agenda, you want, what do you want? A discussion? I'm fine with it, I just want a little clarification.
Thank you. It would be the establishment of a board subcommittee that focuses on those kind of wheelhouses, internal strategies, external strategies, and then resources, what resources exist, rehab facilities, things like that, that we can give parents.
If I can add to that, if you don't mind, support specifically for principals who have to deal, our secondary schools, who are dealing with tons of vaping issues on campus, and specifically, I know there's drug issues, but the vaping issue, I know it affects our, not only our student learner's health, but it also affects our facilities, where
Sure.
things are being thrown in toilets, that students are meeting in bathrooms, and that's, you know, so our principals and our assistant principals at the high schools need some support and need some help, because it's become a real issue.
Ms. Ponsor Kamkar.
Yeah, just to clarify, is this generally substance abuse, or is this about vaping in particular? Are you thinking about it?
I think, I think they are one and the same. It is self-medicating, at what scale people are self-medicating is the real question. I think vaping is the crisis that we're experiencing and impacting classrooms, so I think that's the primary focus, what our strategies are there, but clearly there's interest on the Board's side, so we'll be able to prescribe just how deep we go into the different strategies. I think really for drug treatment, it's about identifying what options are out there for parents now, that we can refer, et cetera, but that's the discussion.
So it sounds like an ad hoc committee focused on substance abuse, both issue and treatment of?
Great.
And I think it would also be really helpful to know, I'm sure, as part of that, what we already have in existence.
Absolutely, it's an inventory, yeah.
Great. Ms. Ponsor Kamkar.
So, is the agenda item to approve the working group, or would the working group come back with a report on the agenda item, and when do you, would, when would you like something?
I think there's so much, there's so much interest in this, so I think it would be better if we established the scope of the work here.
Sure.
And then, kind of issued, who would the working group be?
We're gonna have to agenda.
Yep.
That's what he's asking for.
Yeah, okay, that's what I'm trying.
I'm following the process.
Excellent, so we'll agendize the conversation, so that we can, like you said, we can establish the scope.
Perfect, thank you.
Any concerns, questions? Two and three, hit it.
Quickly, one is regarding security. So we have a number of issues that are hot-button issues now in education that unfortunately create security situations, and I just want to have a high-level understanding of what security costs, what it looks like. We obviously have a partnership with Burbank Police Department, what is the limitations there, et cetera. This can be, you know, a memo, it doesn't necessarily need to be a full-born presentation, but I think it's important that we understand the costs as we go into budget planning, especially as it relates to our cabinet officials as well, and any impacts that they may have, and security needs they may have. And then last but not least, I'm asking for just a policy, you know, there's a lot of different, we have these meetings, and then we ask for an agenda item, and it just kind of flies. And so it would be adding additional responsibilities to the clerk's role to document all of the requested agenda items, and then they would work in tandem with the Board President to make sure that those are facilitated, and then hopefully in the long term, displayed publicly, so that way everybody knows what agenda items have been made, and we can all keep track of that better.
Is it, is it possible that that's, so, I know all of the requests are in the minutes, unless I'm mistaken, so is there a way to have a sort of running document? Again, I'm hesitant to ask this, because I know how much time and energy it takes our staff to transcribe and put everything together, but I think it could be, it could be helpful just to have those as like pullouts, as we're going through the agenda, just so we can keep, I mean, I think we all individually perhaps keep track, but I think having it in a centralized place could be very useful.
I think it's totally doable, just in the process of getting our minutes together, we can do that.
Perfect. Great. So I think, rather than it being something perhaps that the clerk would have to do, because, you know, clerk changes every year, it's something that we can just work into the process of our minutes, does that feel acceptable?
Yes, I was trying not to put it on staff, all on staff, that's what, that was that effort.
Well, and that's my, I mean, I think we need to talk about
What's the system for that?
Yeah, and if it is too time-intensive, then we can have a conversation about an alternative way of doing it.
Okay.
Yeah, just let me put a plan together, and I'll share it with you guys, and we'll figure it out.
Perfect.
I just would say, like, ideally, yes, it would be, it's in the minutes, and so we can look back at the minutes, but I know we've had a significant backlog with other staffing changes that happened, and so Ms. Cuterio has been diligently trying to get all the minutes into our consent agenda, but often, we don't see those minutes until they're there, and so it happens much later, it's like, oh yeah, I did request, what happened? So, I like the idea of like having a, having a queue.
Sure.
And so, Dr. Paramo, you and I can work together.
Either way, I also trust you two to be able to, with
I think it's a great idea.
Anyway, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other future agenda items? Okay. Seeing none, we are gonna move on to item 8A, a presentation of Skills USA California 2024 and SoCal Design Build Competition Results and Student Recognition. I'm gonna, ooh.
We're blink.
I lied, I lied.
8C.
8C first, whee! Recognition for 2024 Burbank Unified School District Classified Employees of the Year, so that our amazing employees who have worked nonstop all day can go home. Mr. Natchenko, thank you.
Alrighty, here we go. Thank you for moving me up. So, good evening, President Dr. Weisberg, esteemed Board members, Superintendent Paramo, colleagues, and community. I'm here tonight with a great excitement to speak to you about the outstanding 2024 Burbank Unified Classified Employees of the Year. The Classified Employees of the Year Recognition Program highlights contributions of our Burbank Unified Classified Employees who support the education of our district's students from preschool through adult school. We would like to acknowledge their tireless efforts, their dedication, and their commitment to our students, and how they play key roles in creating a school environment that contributes to the whole child by promoting student achievement, safety, and health. The district would like to recognize the Burbank Unified School District 2024 Classified Employees of the Year, and they are as follows. Michael Jones, Bret Hart Elementary School. Amanda, I'll read them all, then we'll clap, just for efficiency, clap at the end. And I know it'll be clap silently, okay? Amanda Ibarra, Disney Elementary School, Oscar Macias, Edison Elementary School, Pedro Gutierrez, Emerson Elementary School, Nadia Kadabi, Jefferson Elementary School, Anik Tagmazian, Miller Elementary School, Victoria Lewis, Providencia Elementary School, Tiffany Mirabelle, Roosevelt Elementary School, Fay Reyes, Stevenson Elementary School, Jose Lara, Washington Elementary School, Delapage, Huerta Middle School, Stephanie McCorkle, Luther Middle School, Liliana Ambrose, Muir Elementary, Middle School, Peggy Morgan, Burrows High School, Lydia Shagoli, Monterey and Magnolia Park, Jill Thomas, Burbank Adult School, and Fred Sale, Technology Department. Now we can clap. This year, the Classified Employee of the Year District Selection Committee interviewed all of the 2024 Site Classified Employees of the Year, and after careful deliberation, the District Selection Committee chose one individual to represent Burbank Unified School District as the 2024 Classified Employee of the Year. This year's recipient can be described as a classified employee who is self-reflective, knowledgeable, collaborative, caring, and committed to Burbank students. I am pleased to announce and would like to invite to the podium Ms. Melissa Dreschler, a Student Services and Attendance Specialist as the 2024 Burbank Unified School District Employee of the Year. Ms. Dreschler, Ms. Dreschler, thank you for all your hard work, advocacy, and dedication you have for our Burbank Unified Students. Please accept this clock. As, as a memento of our district's appreciation of the time you have spent for and supporting our students here at Burbank Unified. And now I invite you to share a few words with the Burbank community and the Board.
Those of you that know me know that I am not a fan of the spotlight. Okay, I'm just, you know this, yes. I just want to say thank you, and I'm really, really honored, and I am only as good as the people that I work with and the students that I'm able to help.
All right, I'd like to, is the mic on? I'd like to invite up all of the Classified Employees of the Year for a picture, so everybody come forward, so we can see you and take a picture with you, and with the Board members and Superintendent. President Laura.
I'm gonna stand by front. I do. Congratulations, thank you. You're in the front, you guys are the important people. Somebody has to stand in the front.
Yeah, somebody who's not E. Yeah, I'll be there.
Get him where he's headed. I'm like, you need to stand in the front. No, don't hear her, right over here.
Oh, we're still being ordered.
Perfect, I'm sorry. We have to make sure everyone sees.
All right, everyone, look over there. Three. One more. One, two. Are you good? Pretty good?
Fred, Fred.
Long time. Sorry. Thank you.
Are we doing brief?
I think so.
Just a couple of brief comments, because we can't let our fabulous CSC, our Classified Employees, without celebrating them, so Mr. Ferguson?
Absolutely, so, I mean, you know
They can watch it later.
You know, our Board meetings have definitely shifted to, you know, highlight the hard work of employees in our district, and I think that's been such a welcome change. And last week, or last meeting, we had our Teachers of the Year for different sites, and now our Classified Employees, who really, truly are the unsung heroes in a million different ways, for a million different causes. If there's something that's happening at a school in the middle of a weekend, in the middle of the night, they are the ones showing up nine times out of 10. Not saying our teachers aren't there, they are there, they're in their rooms too, but these folks are really on the front lines in a million ways. And Melinda, who is such a phenomenal representation of our district, you know, she's working with kids who we're not always thinking about, homeless youth, and ensuring that they have bus tokens, bus fare, you know, food, shelter. That's her day-to-day work. So, to celebrate somebody who's worked that hard, along with people like Fred, who comes in every meeting and figures out this contraption of a room, which, I love this room, this room is beautiful, it's historic, but technology-wise, it can be really challenging, and Fred is here almost every week, every other week, setting it up, quietly shakes our hand, and walks out. Just thank you. You make our district run well, and you do it with such pride. And I will always have a special place in my heart for Classified Employees, because I got across the finish line because of one. So, thank you for all you do, we celebrate you as a community, and we appreciate you more than ever, so thank you.
Well, Mr. Ferguson, you said the right thing. As a classroom teacher, I got across the finish line every day because of Classified Employees. You know, you learn, when you're a first-year teacher, your best friend is the school, yeah, the office manager and the custodian, and you take care of them, but it's more than that. It's, it's the woman, or the man or the woman in the library, the secretary to the counselors, or the admin assistant, sorry, I have to use the right terms now, to, you know, to the counselors, all of those folks that every single day make our schools work. Teachers do a great job in the classroom, but you can't do your job if those folks don't show up, if those folks don't do your job. So, thank you to them, because you really make our schools not just great, but amazing. And so, you know, thank you, and you were right, Mr. Ferguson, day or night, you know, something is happening at our school sites, and they're there to take care of it, so thank you for all you do, and yes, Melissa, Melinda is, sorry, is a very special human being, who I think feels the plight of every student that comes into her office, and really wants to do the utmost to help them. So she's greatly appreciated, and she's so humble, too.
Yeah, just, I really appreciate our Classified Employees. I was a Classified Employee at one point, and so I always, I always appreciate the work of the folks that aren't necessarily getting all the glory, and as we know, all of the money that the teachers get, but I just, you know, I really appreciate these folks coming to work every day in service of kids. So congratulations to our Classified Employees of the Year. So I think my colleague used the word unsung heroes. Actually, next Thursday at my work, we are honoring classified categories called unsung heroes, this is LA Community College, you like, if you're there, come by. These are the unsung heroes, and, you know, people forget pandemic, post-pandemic, you know, all the work they did, you know, so thank you for all you do, and, you know, again, as my colleague said, without you, we will not be one of the greatest school districts in the United States, so thank you.
Thank you, everybody, and just, I think she's left, but I wanted to send a special thank you to our CSEA President Laura Baumann, who has been a wonderful partner to all of us, and helps us know what's happening on the ground, so that we can support our phenomenal employees in the best possible way, and advocate for them. So thanks to her, but I do think, I think she's, I don't see her, I think she snuck out. So thanks to everybody, well, now we're gonna go, now we're gonna go to 8A. Dr. Macias is gonna come up here and introduce the Presentation of Skills USA California 2024 and SoCal Design Build Competition Results and Fabulous Student Recognition.
Yes, good evening, Board President Weisberg, members of the Board, District Leadership, Dr. Paramo, and the Burbank community. I am happy to present some very special students here tonight, and some amazing teachers on behalf of their participation in Skills USA California 2024 and SoCal Design Build Competition. I'd like to invite to the microphone here Mr. Aiden Roberts, who is the Chapter President of the John Burroughs High School Skills USA Group, so Aiden, and everyone else.
Good evening, President Weisberg, members of the Board, Superintendent Dr. Paramo, and the Burbank community. I am happy to present some very special students here tonight, and some amazing teachers on behalf of their participation in Skills USA California 2024 and SoCal Design Build Competition. I'd like to invite to the microphone here Mr. Aiden Roberts, who is the Chapter President of the John Burroughs High School Skills USA Group, so Aiden, and everyone else.
Good evening, President Weisberg, members of the Board, Superintendent Dr. Paramo, and other members of the District Leadership. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Aiden Roberts, the President of John Burroughs High School Chapter of Skills USA, and as well Burbank High School USA is here. This evening, I stand before you to shine a light on the organization that embodies the essence of skill, leadership, and excellence, Skills USA. At the heart of Skills USA lies the framework triangle, a robust structure built upon three pillars, personal skills, workplace skills, and technical skills grounded in academics. This triangle symbolizes the holistic approach Skills USA takes towards developing well-rounded individuals to thrive in today's dynamic workforce. Skills USA offers a platform where students can showcase their talents and hone their abilities through a primed competitions, from photography to dental assistant, culinary arts to carpentry, and these competitions provide an opportunity for students to put their skills to the test, pushing the boundaries of their potential while fostering camaraderie and swartmanship. But Skills USA isn't just about competition, competitions, it's about cultivating a culture of excellence through the Chapter of Excellence program. Chapters are encouraged to strive for greatness in everything they do, from community service initiatives to professional development activities. The program instills the students the values of teamwork, integrity, and leadership, laying the foundation for success both in their chosen careers and in life. All chapters require to complete their first level of Chapter Excellence program, and our JBS chapter continues to level two, completing a total of six professional or charitable events, winning a silver medal along with $1,750. In conclusion, Skills USA is more than just an organization, it's a movement, a movement towards a future where every individual has the opportunity to unleash their full potential and make meaningful impact on the world. We hope that Burbank Unified continues to support and celebrate the missions of Skills USA, not just because it fills a requirement for the Parkinson's Grant, a major source of funding for all amazing CTE classes offered by BUSD, but to also pave the way for a brighter tomorrow for all BUSD students. Thank you, thank you. I would like to allow our students to quickly introduce themselves, what competitions they participated in, and what award they won, before turning the presentation over to our state gold medalist, Ryan Boyle.
Hi, my name is Ruby Yarana. I participated in regionals for the Culinary and Baking Arts. I was the bronze medalist in regionals, and I went to compete in state, and I'm also Vice President for the John Burroughs High School Chapter.
I'm Harrison Johnstone, I competed in carpentry, and I was silver state.
Hi, my name is Emma Baldwin, I competed in baking and pastry.
Hi, my name is Vanessa Monbrowne, I competed in photography, and I won third for regionals, and I'm Secretary of our John Burroughs High School Chapter.
Hello, I'm Ryland Boyle, I competed in the carpentry competition, and I got gold medal at both the regional and state level.
Go, introduce yourself, please.
Hello, my name is Jacqueline Papazian.
And I'm Rulie Andrecian.
And we competed in Skills USA Community Action Project, placing first in regionals of Southern California, and silver in state.
Hi, I'm Chloe.
And I'm Christine.
And we competed, competed in the Health Services Cluster in Skills USA California Competitions.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Archie Metosian, and I competed in the Dental Assisting Competition, in which I got first in regionals and third at state.
Hello, I'm Granam MacGurkian, I competed in Basic Healthcare Skills Competition and placed second place in regional.
Hi, my name is Rae.
Hi, my name is Rainu Dometi, and I competed in extemporaneous speaking, and I placed third at regionals. And now for our advisor, Mr. Mopssessian, who does all the work behind the scenes.
If anybody hates the spotlight, it's me, but thank you. I just want to say it's a great honor to coach them. They've done, they've done an amazing job. This was their first year, and they were extremely successful. Unfortunately, we have a couple of people who couldn't make it today because they have so many extracurricular activities. But both schools, amazing job. Had the pleasure of meeting them, getting to know them during state, and it's, it's an awesome.
Alrighty, so I'd like to talk to you just a little bit about what Skills USA means to us and the outstanding opportunity that it is for us to participate in. Skills USA is an organization that has, I think, 120 different industry competitions built inside of it. Its purpose is to kind of be a gateway between your education in your classroom and going into an industry. So, I did carpentry. At both competitions, in regional and in state, I built a little structure. It kind of looks like a small shed on a four-foot-by-eight-foot platform. And what that allowed me to do was learn an unbelievable amount about both carpentry and how to, you know, build structures and build housing. But it also introduced me to a bunch of industry connections. I've talked and met countless people from countless companies. Some of them include the Southwest Carpenters Union, Swinterton, which is a very large industrial carpentry, or construction company, as well as, as well of, as well as many others that include, like, structural companies, or trussing, or anything like that. We've both, we've all been introduced to industries that are related to the competition we participated in, and it truly did introduce us to how we can get inside of the workforce after we're done in high school. I think it was an outstanding opportunity for all of us to participate in, and it truly prepared us for our futures.
I'm here to talk about also Design Build, which was another competition that we competed in for a woodshop. We had construction manager of the year, Ryland Boyle. And that was another wonderful competition that allowed us to meet many industry professionals. Again, Southwest Carpenters Union, who sponsored the buses for us and helped us make our way there. And that was a 15, 10, 10, 15-person team that, we built a much larger shed than we did for Skills USA, because Skills USA was individual competition, which had its own set of challenges and benefits. But working with a team is a whole other thing. And so, that, that allowed us to hone skills of teamwork, and especially Ryland was like project managing, which is a whole other thing. So, it was wonderful. You have anything else you want to add about?
Not really. I mean, I mean, it was, it was, again, it was a huge competition for everyone in, who, everyone who competed in it within our woodshops. And like Harrison's mentioned, Skills USA was an individual competition for us, which means that really only I was subject to those sponsorships and to those people. But for Design Build, it was open to anybody in any of his woodshop classes, and that allowed anyone to gain industry connections and learn the skills required to further their education in carpentry and construction.
Mr. Tabit. Yes.
I'm just-
He, Mr. Boyle, sorry, did qualify to compete in Nationals. Do you want to share when that is and where it's at?
Yes, sorry, I forgot about that. So, in late June, I will be heading to Georgia to represent the district, John Burrows High School, as well as the state of California in carpentry. I'll be competing against every other state in the country. So, in theory, that's 50 different competitors for carpentry.
So, I know, real quickly, I want to acknowledge that we have some other teachers here. So, I know, Mr. Mopssessian, you're awesome. Thank you for what you do to our Burbank High students and other teachers who weren't here present. But we have some other teachers present from John Burrows High School, and I am gonna force them to come to the stage so they can introduce themselves. Please come on up, because they don't do it alone.
I'm Kara Clark. I teach photography in yearbook at John Burrows High School, and I am a co-coordinator for our skills chapter at John Burrows High School.
Sandra Macias, Culinary Arts Science and Advanced Culinary at John Burrows High School, and again, co-advisor with Ms. Clark.
Eduardo Mendez, construction teacher at John Burrows High School.
Oh, you know, yeah, right? But, but I'm, I'm listening, you know, I, I would love some more detail. I'm so glad, Ryan? Ryland, thank you, that you kind of expanded a little bit about what you did to earn that gold medal. So, thank you. But all of you, you know, kind of gave a quick overview. I remember presentations before where we had some photos, and we got to see what was built. But never have I ever seen, I have, you know, I'm getting old, so my memory's not quite as good, talking about culinary arts. And there were two young ladies over here who did some kind of community-based project. Love to hear what that was and what you did. I mean, there's all kinds of things. I'm so proud of all of you, that you all just, you know, did amazing things outside of what you just need to do to get through a school day. So, thank you for that, as well as the teachers who put in the extra time and effort. It's greatly appreciated. What I, what I'd really like to know, and if someday you have five free minutes and want to send us or me an email, I really want to know how this experience maybe shaped your next set of plans. So, I always hope that students have a plan, whatever that may be, whether you're gonna go to college, or a trade school, or just go out and work. What did this experience do to help you with your next plan? I'd really love to know that, because that makes what we do every day, it makes a difference for us, you know, to know that something has been provided that helped you to grow and helped you with the next plan. So, please tell me. I'd love to know.
So, we're, we're a huge state. So, to, to compete is, is a whole thing. To medal is a whole other. But to represent our district, let me just tell you, each of you have made us proud, and also to our teachers who spent the time. Thank you, because you facilitated this moment in a lot of ways, and your hard work facilitated your experience. And, and to have somebody competing in Nationals, holy cow, like, that's a whole different level. So proud of you to represent California, to represent us. No pressure, man, you know, no pressure whatsoever. But, but genuinely, like, this, it's, it's an inspiration to meet that, right? And to be present for that, and to see the reactions that each of you have had. I haven't even heard about some of these categories before, but I'm, I'm, as, as Ms. Tabit said, these are the industries that we need to be filled, to be, and we need experts in them. So, you have all made us proud in new ways, and, and this program is, is always a great thing to see, but it's also evolved over the years. So, thank you to everybody for that.
So, congratulations. I think in ever-increasing AI world, your skills are really in demand more than ever right now. I think, especially when it comes to trade and some of your other skills. I think networking is very important as well. So, I do want to congratulate you. And I would love to, Superintendent Paramo, as we're moving forward more with the conversations about our Center for Entrepreneurship and Innovation Partnering, I'd love to see if any of these students will be interested to act as an advisory member for the center. But also, I think networking being the key, and I agree with my colleague here, we have a lot of questions. I'm looking at the cookies, though. So, I thought, there are cookies over there? I thought it was part of the skill. It's not, right? That's a separate one, right? But I would love to have a little short bio, what you did, and maybe post it on the front page of our district, so others can look at. And, and I think networking is something that is also a skill that, because of social media, some people are forgetting about it. But I, I can tell you right now, working with some of the organizations like the carpenters, there is a big demand. I mean, especially right now in the world of solar panel. I mean, you can go to carpenter and move up to the solar and green technology, big, big demand. So, congratulations to all of you. And, but I would love to see each one of you, your picture, what you did, and let's put it right at the front page of our Burbank Board of Education website. And congratulations again.
Good evening. Just congratulations. I think when we had this group here last year, it was a much smaller group. And so, it's so exciting to see so many students participating, taking your skills to the next level, whether or not that's something you choose to do as a career. Like, being able to construct stuff is very cool. Winning awards for culinary skills is, it's just, it's all, it's all so interesting, because you're really getting some, some real-world experience, and you're getting to try those careers on a little bit and decide if you want to do them all the time. And so, we're just, we're so proud of you guys. And thank you so much to our teacher and teacher advisors. You can just tell from these kids that they're really proud of the work that they've put in and, and the results that they've gotten. So, thank you for, for making this possible for them.
I just want to echo what everyone else is saying, and special shout out to the teachers, because I, I know that this is probably on top of everything else that you're doing. So, you know, you're good, you're good, you're good. How many more days left until school's done? No one's counting. I know. I have a countdown in my classroom. But just, I know how much of an investment it is, and for all of you fabulous humans, I would love there to be a way for us to find out what you're working on even before you go to compete. Maybe there's a chance for us to stop by and see, because you're doing so many different things. And it's the best part of what we do is get to see and celebrate the work that you're doing. So, just a huge thank you to everyone. We're super proud of you. It's so impressive, and I can't wait to hear how it goes in June. I hope you'll let us know, and just can't wait to hear about what all of you guys do next. So, thank you. Dr. Macias, don't go anywhere. Dr. Macias, I will ask you to stay up there and introduce our Luther Burbank Middle School presentation, about which I'm very excited.
I am also very excited. Probably shouldn't say this out loud, but obviously, I'm very connected with this community, and I'm very proud to introduce our principal, Mr. Stephen Hubbell, who will share about the comings and goings of Luther Burbank Middle School. So, Mr. Hubbell? Could we share the presentation, please?
Okay. Thank you, board members, district officials, attendees. My name's Stephen Hubbell. I'm the proud principal at Luther Burbank Middle School. We brought treats for you guys. So, like that. I'm here to highlight my phenomenal programs at Luther. We have some awesome academic programs as well, but the main emphasis will be on our extracurricular and elective programs. I brought a few of my, my support staff over here to highlight some of it as well. The first one up will be our ASB president.
Hi, my name is Mateo Komfo. I am the ASB president here at Luther Burbank Middle School. So, the first topic is respect, excellence, and community. They are the core, core values we hold here at Luther Burbank Middle School. Respect, meaning respecting teachers, staff, and peers. Excellence, meaning doing excellent in our work and everything Luther students do. And finally, community, which all of our students are together every day and cheering each other on. Now, back to Mr. Hubbell to talk about the students, teachers, and the people at Luther.
As I get into highlighting my programs, I can't do anything without the teachers, instructional aides, campus supervisors, custodians, nursing staff, office staff, counselors. Our tech department has, has grown since the pandemic, our cafeteria staff, and definitely my assistant principals. We don't do this solely by one person. It takes a group of people together to get all this done. One of the first groups that I'd like to highlight, last year, we had the 2023 Teacher, the BUSC Teacher of the Year, Alana Grimaldi, who also became the LA County Teacher of the Year, and she ended off being a state finalist. So, we're proud of her. This past year, Vicky Thalheimer, ELD teacher, was the Luther Teacher of the Year, and I don't want to leave out any of our classified staff. We have Stephanie McCorkle, who was the Employee of the Year. All three women are some of the most loving, nurturing women that push students to a higher level, and we want to be where we are without people like them. I'm gonna now get into our elective programs. And one thing that's really nice is, we just ended with Skills USA. All of our programs are CTE programs that are feeders into the NAF academies, which will eventually be doing stuff like that. And I'm so proud of, of where they're at. And as you see, I'm sure you can tell that these tasty treats are, are products of, of their efforts.
Hi, my name's Elijah Hill, and I'm the president of Luther's catering program. Aliyah, she's one of my associates and classmates, and she's passing out vanilla bean scones, double chocolate cookies and sugar cookies, and chocolate chip cookies, which, yeah, we're passing out. So, in short, like, catering, every week, we, me and my classmates, we prepare and deliver lunches to the teachers and support staff at Luther. We also make ca, or we take quarter catering orders, film cooking tutorial videos, and we post these on our YouTube channel. Please subscribe. And then we also compose recipes. Throughout the duration of meal preparation, we learn various culinary skills from our amazing teacher, Ms. Raleigh. And even though catering's just exclusive to eighth graders, Ms. Raleigh offers a semester-long culinary art program for seventh graders, and an exploring foods class on the wheel for sixth graders. And both of these classes get cooking experiences in a state-of-the-art kitchen, learn about nutrition, and get to enjoy the delicious treats they make, and you just enjoy it.
Hi, I'm Nora Redman. I'm an eighth-grade member of the Luther's Advanced Mix Show Choir, Starlight. The choir program at Luther has 180 students in five class periods. This school year, we put on four large productions in the auditorium. One was the hit show Legally Blonde. Luther is the only middle school that does a complete musical. We have three show choirs, Illumination, Spotlight, and Starlight. The choirs have traveled to five regional competitions where they placed at every single event. Just last Saturday, we won first place at the Glendale Acapella Festival and won almost $7,000 for our school. And just yesterday, my choir performed at Disneyland. Our choir director, Mr. Redman, and our stage manager, Ms. Anokian, are the best. They have dedicated countless hours to our success, and their love for performing arts has touched us all. Thank you.
Other programs that, at our school, engineering, we have Exploring Engineering for the Wheel. We have a year-long class. Both of these lead into the Burbank and Burrows NAF academies. We have a global studies class, which has an outdoor classroom, our garden, that we've rebuilt over the last year and a half, where they end up growing food and cooking that food later on. Other extracurriculars, we have a first-year math teacher that brought back the math club. The math club is an opportunity for students to learn higher levels of mathematics while participating in various national competitions. Our cheer team is first in the Nationals at the, or first at the Nationals for Sharp. And then our engineering program, last year, we had the opportunity to go to the Tesla Research Facility over near the Burbank Airport, and it was Women's Engineering Day. We have tons of community partnerships. One of the closest ones we have is with the City of Burbank. City of Burbank, along with the athletic programs, programs they have in the evening, we have a lunch sort program. We are the first middle school to pilot lunch sort program, which has been done at a lot of the elementary schools. We've done a soft rollout this past spring, and we will go strong the next fall. They're also installing pickleball courts. So, anything we can get with the City of Burbank, we have a great relationship with them. And then the Boys and Girls Club, I'm in the middle of working an after-school sports program with them starting next- program with them starting next year. One of the big things that I wanted to emphasize coming into this, my, my second year being a principal, but first full year, is I wanted to have monthly cultural awareness days and everything from Dia de los Muertos to traditional African drummers. We had Armenian dancers a week ago, autism awareness. We want to make sure it's an inclusive, diverse environment for all students. And my Hawaiian heritage, in the next month, we will be having Hula dancers coming out to teach our students. One program that we have at the school, which I'm very proud of, is the Bridges Program. The Bridges Program is a program with students with extensive needs. This is a program that is definitely inclusive. We had some of our students who were a part of the Armenian dancers this past week. And one great thing about this group of students is it's, it's a way for a lot of the general education students to learn empathy and learn to work with students with, with needs, special needs. We, other than classroom experiences, we like emphasizing a lot of real-life experiences. Everything from career days to our field trips. Our field trips, our sixth-grade field trip is to the California Science Center. Our eighth-grade field trip was La Mirada Theater. We had an LA Zoo trip for the seventh graders. And, and the next week, we are going to have an Oceanic Institute for some of our sixth-grade gate students. So experiences like these and not just classroom is what makes Luther great. We have grade-level days. Today, we had an eighth-grade career day. So we ended up having a lot of individuals from various careers come and speak to our students, highlighting the different jobs and career paths. We had mock interviews, students dressed, dressed to impress in their business attire. It was very surprising, so many of the students, they look so much older and so much more mature. It was, it was a great event. I loved it. Next week, we will have World History Day. It used to be Renaissance Day, but that was a focus more Eurocentric. We wanted to do something that was more throughout the world. And that one is going to be next Thursday. We're, we're working out the bugs, but I want to say it's, it's a great event that I definitely, I want to, I'm proud of. And then our sixth graders, our sixth grade coming into the year, we had a peer-mentor program that supports the elementary students coming to middle school, very similar to something like the high schools with Link Crew, but this is its own individual program that we did over two days, that one of my assistant principals did a lovely job hosting. And we're not done yet because the last two, three weeks, we have tons of activities. Tomorrow, we have our Spring Festival. We have our IMA concert next week. I told you earlier that we have Asian Pacific Islander Month, where we're going to have Hula dancers come out and teaching our students. One thing I can say, though, is I'm grateful for being at Luther. We have our Luther Paws when the aircraft comes over, but it's one of the, and if you know, if you've been to this school, you understand what I'm saying. But nothing can be done at Luther without the phenomenal staff that I'm lucky to be a part of. So thank you, everybody, for letting us present. Thanks again.
Sorry, I was going to ask also, the young lady was serving, she didn't introduce, did you introduce her too or not?
She did.
She did? Okay, thank you. So congratulations. I'll make this short. I think I have a solution how to fix our budgetary woes. You know, we just start packing these and sell these cookies. I think we will fix the problem. Thank you very much, and our son's going to be very happy tonight when, well, this cookie, depends what time I'm going home, so.
Anybody else? Thank you, friends. I wanted to actually say, we've, we've had the pleasure of having Mure here and Luther here, and so I, I think that means we'll have Fuerta maybe at the next meeting. But it's interesting because in both, you've come up and Dr. Miller came up, and you talked, there's so many amazing things that are happening on each campus. But I still go back to the fundamental that like what all of you are providing at all three of our fantastic middle schools is just a safe, supported environment for our students to learn in, with amazing teachers and amazing admin and amazing classified staff. And so even with, I mean, we're so lucky to have so many things going on. But foundationally, I know what we're most proud of is the kind of education our students are getting on your campus and the kind of support that they're getting. So, you know, I know sometimes we all feel that urge to be like, look at all the bells and whistles, like, look at what, everything we're doing. But foundationally, the thing that always makes me so proud is just hearing from the families, the Luther families, the Luther students about the type of experience that they're having. And I just want to highlight that because all of this stuff is amazing, but none of it would matter if you weren't doing that foundational work to support our students so exceptionally. So I wanted to just take a second to thank you for that because more than anything, that's what we want for our kiddos. We want them to feel like they can try new things and perform and try something they've never tried before. And, and that can't happen if they don't feel supported at their school site. So I just wanted to thank you for that. Supremely thank you for that. Is somebody going to say something or should I move on?
I'm sorry. It's really, I'm hopping in at this point, but it's the Luther Paws that really has, you know. That was pretty good. My sister went to, went to Luther. I went to Mure. I had every intention of going to Luther until my family moved. But it is such, it is such a unique campus, and it has such a variety of offerings that going on and visiting with staff, it's always an adventure. You're always hearing about something new, but the, the campus really tackles a lot of different communities and supports a lot of different communities while also having, yes, planes flying over and, and you name it, in a very just busy part of town. So for all of those things to maintain the number of programs that you do, we also have our phenomenal teaching partners and classified employees who, you know, have advocated throughout the years and said, hey, we want stabilized enrollment, we want, and you have managed that on top of all of that. And, and to have those programs is one thing. To have it with that instability is a whole different dynamic that doesn't often get acknowledged. And, and that is hard work. And, and everybody coming together to, to be strong for kids, to keep programs going, to keep options available, that is the true expertise of educators nowadays. And, and I just, I, I know, you know, you know, the five of us individually, but you don't know what our lives are like and how often we hear from the community about schools. I go to CBS, I am, I better be feeling well because otherwise, you know, I am hearing about how English class is going. And more than anything, I care about how English class is going. You all are driving that standard. There isn't a middle school that doesn't deliver. And that's, that's, that's amazing in, in today's world with so many challenges. So thank you, Mr. Hubbell. Thank you. And, and it's not easy to present and to summarize an institution like that. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. We are going to move on, Miss, no, I have, I've lost it. We're going to move on to nine reports from the board and staff. We are going to begin with arguably one of my favorite parts of our board meetings always, our student representatives. So tonight, we'll mix it up a little bit, and we'll start with the fabulous Andrek Babouyan from Burbank High School.
Good evening, Board President Weisberg, distinguished board members, Superintendent Paramo, district, district staff, and members of the Burbank community. My name is Andrek Babouyan, and it is with pleasure that I provide a report this evening on all previous, current, and future Burbank High activities. Not too many new updates since the last meeting, but our spring rally and car show went great. ASB received a lot of compliments from students and staff on rally decorations and the execution. And the car show, car show raised a few hundred dollars for the junior class and had around 30 cars attend the show. ASB will be hosting our last UCLA Blood Drive tomorrow in hopes of reaching our usual goal of around 100 signups and 60 to 70 pints of blood donated. Outside of that, as we enter the month of May, we center our efforts around a lot of senior-related activities. Starting with today, we had our Powder Puff game at 5:00 PM. Powder Puff is a friendly game of flag football between our senior and junior girls. And then prom is going to be on Saturday, May 11th, at the Santa Anita Racetrack, not on the racetrack, but in one of the rooms. ASB will have an end-of-the-year celebration with plaques and awards on May 15th. Senior Sunset has been announced, and we will be hosted on May 16th, around 7 o'clock, whenever the sun sets. We have ordered yearbooks now in hopes to receive them before senior sunset, so everyone can cite each other's yearbooks. Grand Night will be on Friday, May 17th, from 5:00 PM to 4:00 AM at California Adventure. Our senior award ceremony will be on Monday, May 20th, and of course, graduation will be on Friday after that, May 24th, 2024. The senior class is very excited for all of our upcoming events, and I, along with the rest of my classmates, can't wait to spend this last month of high school together. Yeah.
This makes me sad.
That's because you got it done, you know? You did it. It's great. Yeah. It's a good thing.
And then real quick, I kind of thought of it when you guys were talking about the vaping issue around the district. I've noticed like the different things that you guys have like implemented to kind of attack the problem. I think one of the most effective things I've seen, I, I've noticed the bathroom restrictions that you guys have done per class. It is really hard for teachers to kind of regulate that because they're overloaded. And obviously, what I'm saying is a lot easier said than done, but I think the best way to approach it is having supervisors at the bathrooms and probably having one guy and one girl there so that way, you know, they could kind of be in there. But yeah, I appreciate you guys shining spotlight on it, just an idea. Yeah, thanks.
And thank you for the suggestion. It's always really helpful. Next up, the fantastic Daniela Alvarez from Monterey High School.
So, good evening, Board President Weisberg, distinguished members of the board, Superintendent Paramo, district staff, and our audience. As we enter the last four weeks, we are very focused on a positive attendance until the end of the school year. Students have remained above 90% attendance, and we are actively monitor, monitoring to ensure students are getting to school in order to complete required credits. Ms. Weaver is starting to plan for graduation. Our theme this year is enjoy every moment. It is going to be a beautiful ceremony, and we invite you all to attend. Last month, our cultural focus was on Armenia and the Armenian genocide. We created a bulletin board and had, and had a student educate us about Armenian culture and Armenian genocide. This previous Tuesday, our peer-to-peer reading group, Panther Pages, went to Disney Elementary School, and a special thank you to Ms. Harrison for hosting us. Panther Pages loved going to these classrooms and reading to the students about the diverse topics of history, of hip-hop, de la suerte, and great artists. We are, we also went on a huge field trip recently to Warner Brothers. Ms. Angelini applied for a grant through BAEF to host a field trip to Warner Brothers, and over half the school attended. At Monterey, our goal is to help students find a passion and then turn it into a possible job or career opportunity. The field trip was a success, learning about how life is working at some of our local studios and post-production facilities. Students were moved and amazed seeing the set design, workshops, and costume department, being able to connect with what students have learned in their history of film class or music composition class to a real, hands-on workspace. It's certainly a special opportunity. We want to thank the Burbank Education and Arts Foundation for helping us with funding the field trip, as well as Peggy Flynn, who found some CTE money to apply, and a special thanks to our hard-working staff, Michelle Otis, Amy Angelini, and Rachel Krishan, I think, for organizing the trip. If resources allow, Monterey would love to host a field trip similar to this yearly in order to further the education and application of students for students. Thank you so much for your time. Any questions?
So Ms. Alvarez, I think my colleague said it best last time, how articulate you are. I think you should become an attorney. That's just my advice. But I also want to thank you and Monterey and, you know, I think it's the first time I've heard Monterey actually bringing in a specific event about the Armenian genocide. So I'm very happy that this is happening because, again, as what we're seeing going around the world right now, I think it is a time of healing, bringing communities together. And I appreciate what you're doing. I'm, I can see, you know, that more and more, we're talking about all the concerns, not only about my community, but also humanitarian concerns. So thank you very much for all you do. And again, if you're interested in becoming an attorney, let me know.
Of course. Yes, thank you so much. We love to shine spotlight on the things that are most important, to have people aware of what's really going on in the community, in people's lives that are affecting them deeply. So just to have that, it's really outstanding to see that at Monterey. Thank you so much.
Yeah, she isn't it. Yeah. If, just a quick note to staff, thank, thank you for your report. You can become an attorney or whatever you want. I, I'm, I'm going to be celebrating your success and achievements, no doubt. If we could make sure, I, I want to understand field trip access issues here. So if, if there's a, we are planning our budget, Andy's looking at me like, don't you dare. I want to make sure Monterey has, all the other schools have trips. And, and I want to make sure, whether it's partnerships, private, or that we're dipping into, set aside, whatever we can do to realistically facilitate some, a, a similar experience, I, I want to make sure that that's maintained. So, and I, I think everybody would. But that was a great call out.
Last but certainly not least, the phenomenal Paris Tesfu from Burrows.
Good evening, President Emily Weisberg, distinguished school board members, Superintendent John Paramo, district staff, members of the community. My name is Paris Tesfu, president of John Burrows High School, and I'm here to give my report on May 2nd, 2024. I'm going to start with an update from AP African-American Studies. We are doing our, like, presentations for the AP tests, like, it's, like, supplemented into the AP tests. We worked on it for three weeks, and we're presenting right now. And some of the presentations discussed, like, that were included in our, we've only been doing it for two days, but, like, some that really stood out to me were the war on drugs and how it affected Black communities in particular, African and African-Americans, and the music of 1971. And we still have a lot more, a lot more days of presentations, so I'm really excited to see what my peers have thought up. And I'm, it's really been fascinating learning about, more about Black studies through the lens of my peers, not just the lens through a framework. So I'm really excited, and I'm presenting tomorrow, so. Oh, okay, this is kind, it's kind of, it's, it's kind of an intense name, but I, I just wrote it in here. It's called Beyond Instruction: Improving AP African-American Studies for Revolutionary Learning. And I just, my presentation, you basically have to come up with a couple sources in order to build around your thesis. So my thesis is that I want to add more because I just love the class, and I've had such a interactive teacher, and the things that he brings up in class that are not included in the framework need to be included, so I wanted to bring that up. So next, in senior news, our prom was last Saturday. It was, the theme was a Waltz Through the Regency Era, and it was at the Wallace, Wallace Annenberg Center. It was a beautiful culmination of our senior year that would, that will be remembered by all who attended. And our prom royalty was announced to be Emerson Riley and Cruz Martin, so congrats to them, they're amazing, so, yeah. Next, in performing arts news, the drama department is excited to present their spring play, The Play That Goes Wrong, tomorrow, May 3rd and the 4th at 7:00 PM, and May 5th at 2:00 PM. Tickets are available on the drama website, and students, ticket, they're all the same tickets, you know, the prices. Um, the I M A program um, held their swing night last Friday, and where students enjoyed a night of jazz performed by both I M A and V M A students. Next with college news, the College Pre-mentors and our Teen Court Club um, teamed up to host a college net readiness workshop with col, with college interns from PESA, and it was in the College Pre-mentor um, classroom at lunch today. And ending, oh, uh, I forgot what it's called, what is it called? What is PESA?
I'm sorry to put you on the spot, I just threw out the question, what's PESA? We have the president here, okay, great.
I don't know, I don't have Wi-Fi, okay.
City of Burbank, we do not have what? Parents, educators, students, and administrators, just for the micro, no, thank you, sorry.
Yeah, and um, ending as always with sports news, um, our softball team um, today played at Woodbridge at C S F, C I F playoffs um, at three fifteen, um, baseball played at Ontario Christian, and there were also um, C I, C I F playoffs, um, and that was today at six, so, yeah, and, yeah, honestly, yeah, that's good. Any questions? Yeah.
So I'm coming on Monday to hear the presentations, but how do I get to hear your presentation if I can't be there tomorrow?
You come tomorrow.
Well, well, okay, so first of all, ouch, second of all, just get somebody to cover my classes and I'll be there.
Dr. Weisberg, I am now planning on going tomorrow morning. Uh, do you want me to tape it for you if I have the permission of Ms. Paris Tesfu?
Sure.
Nailed it, thank you.
I can do that.
Yes, innovators.
So again, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Tesfu, you are also studying to become an attorney, right?
Yes.
So, and and I, I heard Mr. Babouyan, you're looking at that too, right? Being an attorney? So, three attorneys.
Oh.
And I apologize. I'm not, the reason I'm doing this is because all millions of viewers are watching, are, yeah, here's your opportunity, future interns, opportunities. Thank you very much.
I believe it was a hundred and fifty views last meeting, but people talk, people talk.
That's a million.
You know, when it gets controversial, it's like two fifty, you know, but we're work, we're working our way up. Hey, that didn't exist before, so.
Ms. Tabit, did you want to offer legal advice?
That would be illegal, as I have not passed the bar yet.
There's always tomorrow.
Right, I got, I've got a class to go to now, I guess, but. Oh my gosh, I know, and this happens to me all the time, I like to think I'm just an older model computer, that it takes a while for that info to come back up, it's there, you know, um, but it just takes a second, not that I'm old, but it's just a little older model. I do, oh, I know what I, thank you. Dr. Paramo, help me with my memory. Do we?
I'm older than you.
Listen, I truly believe that every student needs to have a plan, and that plan is very important to that particular student, it could be college, as I said, I said this before, it could be a trade school, it could be going to work, it could be taking a year off just to. Right, arms, armed services, it could be just whatever, so when I ask this, it doesn't demean anybody who's not following this pathway. Got that?
Yep.
Why, doesn't terribly have to make this disclaimer, but that's the way I feel. There's a young man at your school who has been accepted to, yeah, all, three, I think of the four, of the armed service academies.
Oh, yes.
Frank Hernandez. Hernandez, to West Point Naval and Air Force. That's huge in that arena, huge, and I, I, I couldn't help but ask, wouldn't this be crazy if there was more than one, if there was someone else that needed to be recognized? Because I think getting accepted to three, well, getting accepted to one is a huge thing, and, and Frank got to make his choice, and I'm extremely, extremely proud of this young person and his family, because you don't, the student just doesn't do it by themselves, and it took the work of folks at Burrows, at his home, everywhere to make this happen, and he deserves, you know, a big round of applause and a pat on the back and anything else this young man needs. Will we? Thank you.
I'll make sure to tell him in econ tomorrow.
Please, please, I just.
Yeah, we talked about you.
Yeah, well, you know, it's the beauty of social media, uh, I happen to be Facebook friends with his mom, and she, of course, proudly posted it, I was like, wow, with my school board hat on, so, uh, you know, whatever the pathway is that a student chooses, I'm super proud of them, and I hope they get the most of it, but this is just a like, super extraordinary, that needs to be, you know, so please, yes, tell Frank we're very proud of him, and Dr. Paramo says we're going to invite him over, so, and then my second thing to both of you, um, all of you, is social media, again, was great seeing all the pictures of the prom folks uh, on social media headed off, and some of them you know, because you live in the community and you just know, and you're like, as somebody else said, like, whoa, did you grow up, look at you, you know, handsome, filling out that suit, you know, not the, you know, at, at middle school, when they go through the graduation, they just, you know, haven't quite grown yet, and then here they are, young, you know, adults, and it's so fun to see, so, thank you for all those posts to the Burrows community, looking forward to seeing Burbank highs after this Saturday, and uh, it's all good, so thank you. That's all I wanted to say, thank you.
Thank you, Paris.
Now I have a life, I get to look at social media posts. So, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. So, uh, item nine B is our bookmark for our fabulous uh, union representatives, it looks like tonight, uh, we do not have our fantastic B T A Burbank Teachers Association President, Mr. Nicole D'Abecchi, and our C S C A Employees Association, C S C A, Ms. Laura Baumann also is not here, nor is Ms. Flossy from Bossa, so we're going to move on to nine C, reports from the superintendent.
Thank you so much, uh, I want to use the first part of my time uh, to invite Dr. Macias to the podium, uh, he has a recognition.
Good evening, uh, and thank you again for this opportunity, I wanted to acknowledge all our Burbank Unified School District principals, yesterday was uh, School Principals Day, um, so I have a little statement I want to read. So, this is a day that we celebrate your remarkable leadership and the vital role you play in shaping our schools and community. Your leadership sets the tone for excellence, fosters a culture of learning, belonging, and inspires everyone around you to strive for their best. Your guidance and vision are invaluable in navigating the challenges of education, especially during these uncertain times. Your unwavering belief in the potential of every learner and your steadfast advocacy for their success are a beacon of hope and inspiration. Uh, I want to thank you, I think we all want to thank you for your resilience, your compassion, and your unwavering dedication to the betterment of all our Burbank Unified Schools. Today and every day, we want to honor you and express our deepest gratitude for all that you do. Your leadership matters, and we are incredibly fortunate to have you leading the way, so thank you, Burbank Unified School Principals.
I know our B T A president is not here this evening, uh, but I wanted to share with the board an experience that I had, uh, that was initiated by Nicole D'Abecchi, uh, our B T A president, um, I was able to meet last week with uh, the brand-new principal of Burbank High School, along with several teachers, uh, that was initiated and set up by Nicole D'Abecchi, and it was um, exactly what I needed on a Friday after a tough few weeks, because the meeting was absolutely inspirational. Uh, I got to talk for two hours with our amazing staff at Burbank High, uh, who spoke positively about the strides we're making with school safety, with our school culture, uh, and of course, they have ideas of how to even make that better, which we're totally open to. One of the topics that we spoke about had to do with academic rigor, uh, and you know, given my background in instructional services, it's exactly the topic that really I'm passionate about and get excited about. And our teachers, th, this is not new, I've been, I've been in the district for almost twenty years, our teachers just set a very high bar, they do, they always have, it's extremely high, they, they talk about Blooms taxonomy and wanting to get to the top of that pyramid, and to get our kids uh, access so that they can get to the higher levels of thinking, uh, and it's absolutely inspirational. What it left me thinking about as an educator is that before you can have Blooms, you have to have Maslow. So, when you think about Maslow, what we're saying is, is that you can't get to those higher levels of thinking until you have created an environment and a culture in which kids are safe. If kids feel safe, they're going to learn better, they're going to learn more, they're going to have more access to all the wonderful things that we can teach them. We focus so much, and rightfully so, on the physical safety of our kids because of the world we live in, and I get it, that's a reality that we have to constantly be on the forefront of our minds, but what is equally important is the emotional and psychological safety that our kids need to feel in order for them to learn. I am coming up pretty close to my first year as superintendent, uh, so much that I didn't expect, and that's okay, but I hope that after a year, that what the community can see from me is that I am very hyper-focused on both um, elements of safety for our kids, not just the physical part, but also the psychological part and the emotional part, because it's critical, it's not only critical for their mental health, it's critical for their academic success, and I'm always open to have these discussions, uh, so, so, again, so much going on, uh, and open to the public and to parents who ever want to talk, thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Paramo. So with my board member's approval, because we are at seven thirty, we have two public hearings that need to occur at seven thirty, um, there is a number of people, and I just want to make sure people filled these out correctly, so I have a couple of cards with people who specifically indicated twelve A, that is for twelve A, the public hearing regarding the renaming of Joaquin, of Miller Elementary, I just want to make sure that you, that you know that's different than the general excellent, I just don't want anyone to not get a chance to speak on what they wanted to speak on, so if the board is okay, I'd like us to move to the public hearings, we can do those in a timely fashion, and then we'll immediately go back to general public comment. Is that okay, everybody? Okay, so we're going to jump ahead briefly to twelve A, public hearing regarding the request to rename uh, the Joaquin Miller Elementary School Auditorium in John, in honor of John and Nancy Ossoff. The Board of Education, well, I, I reversed that, I should have said that second and then gabbled first, but if everyone's okay with it, I just gabbled second. Okay, so we have a couple of speakers, um, in the order that the cards, our first speaker is um, Deb Winstein, followed, yes, that's okay, followed by Joan Becker, and then there's two more after that that have indicated twelve A, so come on down. Oh, take your time, I had one of those.
Good evening, Dr. Paramo, district employees, and distinguished members of the board. My name is Debbie Winstein, and I'm returning to you this evening after a meeting with the renaming committee, to ask again that our newly refurbished auditorium be named after two very special members of our school community, John and Nancy Ossoff. You will hear from my colleagues tonight as to why this honor should be given to these two individuals. Besides the years of teaching and post-retirement volunteering, purchasing equipment, supplies, costumes, and props for our theater department, and donating tens of thousands of dollars to refurbish our hundred-year-old school auditorium seats and floors, there are no two better humans to bestow this honor upon. I'll make this as brief as possible, I grew up with a word that was used in our house to describe very special people, you would only be so lucky as to grow up having been called this word, but even more fortunate as to have someone cross your path who lives up to it. A mensch in Yiddish is a person of integrity, morality, dignity, with a sense of what is right and responsible, but mensch is more than just an old Yiddish adage, it is relevant now across the world more than ever. To be a mensch is to be supportive, to be a friend, to be calm in troubled times. John and Nancy Ossoff personify this word, and it is my hope after hearing my colleagues, you would agree they fit this description perfectly, thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, next we have Joan Becker, followed by Darla Gerharder, and if I mispronounce, please correct me, because I'm relatively blind at this point.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Paramo, district staff, my name is Joan Becker, I teach fourth grade at Miller Elementary School, I'm here this evening to support the proposal to name Miller's auditorium the Nancy, John and Nancy Ossoff Auditorium. The naming would be a fitting tribute to one of the hardest-working, kind-hearted, and knowledgeable people I know, I am incredibly proud to call him friend. All of a sudden I got emotional. When I tell others we are having a play at school, many people wrongly assume it will be of low quality with little expertise or expertise expected, right? That could not be further from the truth, just yesterday, my class and I had the privilege of watching a kindergarten class perform the Three Peaky Opera. Michelle Fitzpatrick's, Miller's Teacher of the Year, by the way, class presented the musical completely with musical accompaniment, costumes, five-year-old narrators who are amazing. Earlier this year, fourth and fifth grade students performed plays in front of packed houses. These performances could simply not have happened without John Ossoff's dedication. He has almost single-handedly put together a sound system that allows Miller students' hard work to be heard, he has bought equipment using his money, wrangled ex-Miller parents and faculty in the entertainment business to help set up permanent lighting and speakers. He has done this time and again, as he's slowly built up our auditorium to be a place worthy of our students' efforts in presenting plays, musicals, and choral performances. Next up then was the seating, we had to tape off six or seven disintegrated seats, for lack of a better term, I know of at least three times, and the seats fell apart with a person sitting in them, and of course, if you're going to replace seating, you must also replace the hundred-year-old flooring. As many of you have seen, Miller's auditorium was on its last legs, but we were nowhere near finished with it. Others will tell you about John and Nancy Ossoff's monumental donation to refurbish our auditorium, this money was the driving force behind the actual work beginning, work beginning in the auditorium. A quick shout-out to the Facilities Department, which supported the projects this past summer as the hundred-year-old seats and floorings were removed and modern safe elements replaced them. A little painting was done to spruce up the place, and when the, this year began, we had a beautiful new auditorium. Miller's fourth and fifth graders recently had a walking field trip to Burbank High School to see their production of Grease, it was satisfying to see that so many of the students performing in the production were past Miller students. We know of at least six Miller students whose interest in theater was barked at Miller and continues to grow in their college years. This is proof that elementary school productions and concerts impact student life for years to come. The many gifts afforded our students because of John and Nancy's generosity will serve them throughout their lives and have and will provide memories for them to cherish forever. Naming, naming the Miller Auditorium after the Ossoffs would put the finishing touches to our revitalization project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Excuse me, after dollar, we have Melissa Pamper. Excellent.
Good evening, my name is Darla Gerharder, and I teach second, third grade um, special education at Providencia Elementary, and I'm here, um, I'm sorry, forgot to say Dr. Weisberg, board members, Dr. Paramo, and, that's the thing I worried about, and I missed it, anyway, I'm here tonight on behalf of, to ask the board to approve the renaming of Miller Auditorium to the John and Nancy Ossoff Auditorium. I've been a part of Miller family since nineteen ninety-nine, my children attended Miller, and I've also worked at Miller, um, I think two times, maybe three times, I, I can't keep up, um, I keep coming back to Miller because of the relationships. I keep coming back to Miller because of the relationships, events, and the phenomenal student productions at Miller. The bonds that I've made and the impact Miller has made in my life are everlasting, and this has been the same with many of our alumni. The kids have grown from their experiences at Miller and continue to return. John Ossoff started with student plays in his classroom. Every student had a part or a role in the production. This provided opportunities for students who may never have gone onstage or behind the scenes. This continues today. We see students discover their hidden talents and interests. Many students continue on in middle school, high school, and beyond. The impact on the lives of many, many students are immeasurable. The impact isn't just on students from Mr. Ossoff's class. He's, he's been, I'm sorry, he hasn't been paid to teach for years, but he has a better attendance record than any of us paid teachers. The improvements made to, to the formerly old, unsafe, and dated auditorium make it so inviting for our students to get involved in these activities. John Ossoff has been and continues to be available to support, work the soundboard, design and build sets for any classes, activities, district meetings, or any other reason the auditorium might be used. He's always available. Nancy Ossoff, John's wife, has supported our programs with financial donations and basically gives up her husband to the needs of Miller, whether it's financial or time, because he's always there. So please, consider the, the change of the name from our Miller Auditorium to the John and Nancy Ossoff Auditorium. I think this would be a great, just a great opportunity for us to continue this tradition. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Pamperin, followed by Joel Schlossman.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Paramo, district staff. I am also here tonight to ask the board to approve the renaming of the Miller Auditorium to the John and Nancy Ossoff Auditorium. As some of you may know, Miller Elementary turned 100 years old in 2024. Over the past eight or nine years, the auditorium seating had begun to literally disintegrate beneath our patrons. At that time, John Ossoff and a team of Miller teachers began working what was with then the Booster Club, today Team Jaguar fundraising, in order to raise funds, to replace the seats. As a school, we managed to raise a bit more than $20,000, which was wonderful, but nowhere close to the $93,000 we needed. After years of fundraising efforts, Mr. Ossoff and his wife Nancy Smith generously stepped in and donated the remaining $70,000. This project would not have been completed if it were not for the Ossoff family. This alone should be enough of a reason to name it after them. However, there is more to the story. John Ossoff was a teacher at Miller Elementary, and he was integral to the creation of the Miller Theater Department, which has helped the school to earn a distinguished arts award multiple times for theater as the only elementary school to earn that for theater in the state of California. Very early on, he recognized the importance of the arts for all students, but in particular for those who were language learners or for those for whom academics is a challenge. He created a way to engage all of our students who have an interest, and the program has grown immensely. Several years ago, Mr. Ossoff retired from teaching, but that does not mean he has retired from Miller. He shows up every morning between 6:00 and 7:00 a.m. to work on continuing upgrade projects that he continues to pay for in the auditorium, to help a variety of staff members with their productions, green screen movies, our choral program. And he volunteers in 4th and 5th grade classes nearly every day, all day. This man has dedicated his life to the students and staff of Miller Elementary. He does not know that we are here tonight. There is a kindergarten play that was going on earlier, and he thinks we were all sick, and that's why we're not there. And he would probably be embarrassed by this attention. But if ever a building should be named for someone, it's now. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Joel Schlossman. I'm a parent of four children, one of which is still within the district. All four of my kids went to Miller School. I have no opinion on naming an auditorium after Mr. Ossoff. I thank him for his service and his hard work. But there's other people that, if you're going to open this door of naming auditoriums and naming facilities, that you should consider. Two that come to mind is the Chuck Lorre Foundation, who's been very generous. I see his name and his organization over and over when you thank people for gifts. And it's in the hundreds of thousands of dollars that this organization gives. Another one that comes to mind, and I've talked about it over the years, is Gain Credit Union, which operates classes to our high school students on financial literacy. And I think they've done a tremendous job, and they're worthy of something in this vein. So when you consider this, will you please consider the others as well?
Okay, I am going to close this public hearing, as all the speakers who have indicated have addressed the board on this item. We are going to go to 12B, Public Hearing Regarding the Title VI, American Indian Alaska Native Education Program Application. It does not look like we have any public comment on this item, so I will go ahead and close the public hearing for speakers addressing 12B. We are going to move back now to, hold on, Item 10A, Request to Address the Board, Public Communication on Agenda Items and on Any Subject Within the Jurisdiction of the School Board. Sure.
Would it be proper or a good move to do 12A and 12B?
We just did 12A and 12B.
I apologize. 13A and 13B? And do the votes while it's right here, and people are here, and it's relevant, and then go back?
Sure. Okay.
Sorry, I didn't ask that earlier.
That's not a problem. 13A, Approval of Request to Rename the Joaquin Miller Elementary School Auditorium in Honor of John and Nancy Ossoff. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Ferguson, seconded by Ms. Tabit. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries 5-0. A huge thank you to our naming committee, who had a great, thank you, thank you for your time, and thank you to the Ossoffs. I think we're all going to be really excited when it finally happens. So thank you for being here to, to sing their praises.
Invite us, please.
Invite us, please, we'll come and celebrate.
They can't pay for it, though.
13B, Approval of the Title VI, American Indian Alaska Native Education Program Application. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Agakonian, seconded by Clerk Ponser Kamkar. All board members in fa, is there any discussion? All board members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries 5-0. And I want to thank the parents who came forward and really initiated this so, so much. I don't know that we would have been able to do this without them coming and bringing it to our attention. So Dr. Knappich, I can't remember the name of the fabulous father, but if we can let him know that we took this vote?
Jonathan "Blood Wolf" Lopez.
Mr. Blood Wolf Lopez, thank you so much, and let's let him know about this and thank him for bringing it to our attention. And thank you, Dr. Knappich, for all your work on this. Now for real, y'all. Public communication on agenda items and on any subject within the jurisdiction of the school board. Any individual or group representative present this evening may address the Board of Education on any agenda item or on any subject within the jurisdiction of the school board by completing a white request card and turning it in to Ms. Ceterio. Speakers are requested to state their name prior to speaking to the board. Not more than five minutes may be allotted to each speaker, except by unanimous consent of the Board of Education. The superintendent may refer the matter to the proper department for review. The district is providing alternatives to in-person attendance for viewing and participating. I believe we have one virtual speaker. Is that person still? No, so that person is not here. So we will move to, our first speaker is Leanne Matusik. Please tell me if I've mispronounced that, followed by Dawn Barnes.
Perfect. Okay. Good evening, board members, school administrators, superintendent, members of the audience present and via Zoom. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. My name is Leanne Matusik. I'm the mom to three boys. One is 21, and a set of 16-year-old fraternal twins. I have a long and rich history with the Burbank Unified School District as a parent volunteer, starting at Stevenson Elementary. I was even an employee for a bit as a yard duty staff, watching the students at recess and lunch. I was also asked to travel to Sacramento for Legislative Day to represent our district. Hi, Ms. Tabit. I don't know if you remember me, but we were seatmates on that plane that day, and you gave me excellent guidance on how to get a very busy politician's attention, so our kids can get the funding and help they need for their education. I only say all of this so you know that the person standing before you commits to our school district and continues to be committed to it. My 16-year-old son is a late-diagnosed deaf student. We did not find out he had severe hearing loss until he was nine years old. He did not enter the Deaf and Hard of Hearing Program until mid-7th grade. He was in the Total Communication Program, which uses American Sign Language and voice to teach the students. My son thrived in this program at Muir Middle School, so much so that I asked he be held back, so he can absorb as much as he could about his new community and also learn how to learn as a deaf student. Everyone seemed to know his name at Muir, but then Lucas is a social kid. He was finally being seen and educated in an appropriate environment. After his first day of high school at Burbank High, I asked how it all went. He did not have much to say. I asked how his teacher was. He was excited to see her. She wasn't there, he told me. Okay. He had his one-to-one aide to keep him safe and on track, so I was not too worried yet. Second day of school, still no teacher. I emailed Patty Ivankavic, head of the Deaf and Hard of Hearing Program, also known as DHH, excuse me, DHH. She had no idea and thought it best if she forwarded my email to the district office. The following day, I got what I felt was a lackluster response. Oh yeah, sorry, I was supposed to send out an email to the parents. I'll do that. Wednesday evening, an email went out to the parents informing us of the lack of a teacher. A revolving door of subs came. None of them were appropriately credentialed as a DHH substitute. Thank you to that substitute, that substitute, though, who shows up every day with a smile for his students and is doing his very best, given the circumstances. He's even learning ASL from the students. You rock. August 31st, I received a letter/memo in the mail with my son's name scrawled on the top of it. It was from Dr. Farber. The memo opened with his introduction, and he went on to say, "I believe everyone's aware that we are presently interviewing for a new DHH teacher." What? "What if we had not known about this, and this was our first communication from the school? For those not in the special education community, not having a homeroom teacher for these kids means they don't have what is called a case manager. The case manager helps the inclusion teachers adapt their curriculum for our students if needed. The inclusion teachers were left unsupported as well. My son has disabilities that sometimes require him to use the elevator. He has been denied timely access to the school elevator since day one. I have a letter from his doctor at Children's Hospital to state why he needs access. We asked that his one-to-one aide receive an elevator key. We thought that would be okay, since she's an employee of BUSD. An elevator key is part of the employee welcome packet at other school sites. The month of April had two huge milestones for the deaf community. One is the observance of the invention of ASL. That is observed on April 15th. April is also Deaf History Month. I could find nothing in the BUSD calendar archives or on any school calendar going back to 2014, observing these two huge events in the deaf community in April. Deafness is what is called a low-incidence disability. History and statistics tell us it is difficult to find qualified teachers, interpreters, or aides for these students. Knowing that history, I ask you why the district waited all year to engage an employment company that specializes in hiring these hard-to-find teachers. March 7th, the warrant was approved to hire a private employment company. The school year ends May 27th. I also recently found out that deaf students are in a room without working fire alarm system. There are no strobes on the alarms, a necessary safety item for deaf individuals. I found this out during one of my son's IEP meetings. The next day, I called the Burbank Fire Department, and the assistant fire marshal was out to the school site within a few days, and indeed, the deaf students are in a room without strobes. The fire marshal and the facilities person were able to find a vacant room with a working system that the students could be moved into. I imagine this is hard for all of you to hear. It was extremely difficult for me to learn this as a parent of a very vulnerable student. As I mentioned earlier, I am committed to the school district, and while I'm committed, I also try to be as transparent as possible. Is it okay if I go on?
I just need to get approval from the rest of the board. Is it okay to extend time? Yeah.
Almost done, promise. We recently won an IDEA claim against the district on behalf of my deaf son regarding the educational time he has lost this year, among other things. Part of the settlement meant we could not pursue an ADA claim or a civil rights claim if we accepted the offer. We could not in good conscience agree to that, given the current circumstances at this school. I am asking that there be some type of follow-up to the existing unacceptable conditions for the deaf students at Burbank High School. Full-time deaf and hard-of-hearing teacher, adequate interpreter coverage, safe school environment, which means students are hubbed in a classroom with a fully functional fire safety system, elevator access key to all who need it, which would be an aide or an appropriate employee accompanying the student, school support and acknowledgement of the deaf community on campus, starting in September with Deaf Awareness Month, and rounding out the year with Deaf History Month in April. This is not the time to turn away from this problem and what has happened to these students. Now is the time to fix these issues of safety and communication and develop an appropriate and fair educational atmosphere for these students that have so far been ignored. I have a package for each and every one of you of examples of everything I stated in my speech. Yeah, this was my last resort. So I appreciate you all letting me speak tonight. I welcome any questions. I know it's late, or you can, you will have the packages and you can read them when you're, when you can. It's kind of tough to read all that stuff. And then get back to me. And I'd like to try and, just try to correct this and keep these students safe. And the biggest thing is just acknowledge them, that they're there. Because right now, that is not happening.
Thank you. And just so you know, the way that public comment works is we respond at the end, and we have questions and a response, but I want to thank you just for the packet, and we will respond at the end of public comment.
Perfect.
Thank you so much. Ms. Dawn Barnes, followed by Joel Schlossman.
Good evening, Burbank leadership. I am so glad that I followed our wonderful Luther presentation, and I have to say that I appreciate your comments of safety, one of the things I'll bring up, and your comment of our extreme dedicated staff. So I really appreciate those earlier comments. So I'm Dawn Barnes, math co-chair and faculty chair, just for 15 more days, from Luther Middle School. It was just a little over a year ago since the last time I was here speaking out about the inequities facing Luther Middle School, and losing our visual arts program, not having an assistant principal of discipline, and a decline in enrollment due to district policies. Since then, we enjoyed one year of increased enrollment, which we think is improving still too, an assistant principal of discipline, and of course, the continuing of our visual arts program. Now I'm here to discuss the extreme cuts Luther Middle School will be facing for the 2024-25 school year. These cuts will greatly affect the educational program at Luther, as well as the overall safety of our learners. Last year, we were promised the AP for three years. Next year, we are slated to lose that position already. This position helps support our learners by providing positive interactions with learners when they need it the most. The AP provides safety checks in the morning, attends multitudes of IEP meetings where individual education plans are designed for our learners needing educational support. The loss of Jill Tobin will once again put a detrimental strain on the Luther community. Next year, we will lose our intervention behavior specialist, Aggie Sosa. Aggie works with our learners who are in the most need of support. She has created relationships with these learners and their families, supporting them through the difficulties of middle school and guiding them towards becoming successful parts of our community. Next year, we will lose a school counselor. Our school counselors are vital to the health and welfare of our learners. They provide daily check-ins, host support groups, and provide lessons on mental health success. With the loss of one counselor, more learners will go without the support they need to be successful at Luther and in their daily lives. Next year, we are projected to lose two current FTE positions, as well as our classes to be around 36 learners each. Less teachers and more learners per class will affect the educational program at Luther. But fear not, our dedicated staff will rise to the challenge of these difficult times, but there will be a cost to our program at one point, yet to be determined. The loss of these positions will put undue stress on our Luther community of learners, teachers, and support staff. Last year, in meaning- Last year, in meetings with the district officials, it was made very clear to us that our title line coordinator should not be used for supporting discipline. With the loss of the AP and the behavior intervention specialists, is it the district position that the title line coordinator support our school by handling and supporting our learners by being part discipline and part intervention? Is it the, is it the, is it the expectation of the district to use that position in that manner? If it is, it is not what Luther envisions for our title line coordinated position. Additionally, if the coordinator is handling discipline even on a part-time basis, why should our school site funds be used to pay for that instead of the district? Luther Middle School is an incredible community of learners, teachers, support staff, and parents. Our dedication to building a safe community for our learners is unparalleled. We have fought to overcome inequities which have affected our community, and now we find ourselves fighting it again to maintain the structure of our community to serve all of our learners. The elimination of the AP, the behavior interventionist, the school counselor, and the FTEs will have a negative impact on our community. Our staff urges the board and the district to preserve these positions for the benefit of our Luther nation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes.
Good evening, everybody, once again. Good evening, Madam President. I noticed that you stood for the Classified Teacher of the Year, but you didn't stand for our flag salute. And I think that most people would agree that standing for our flag salute is equally as important as standing for the Teacher of the Year. I watched an interview with Dan Rather. He's 92 years old. Of course, he's a famous retired newscaster. And the interviewer asked him, "What is news?" And his response took me by surprise. He said, "News is what people in power don't want you to know." And I thought that was interesting. And I think that "don't want you to know" part applies to this bond, this $1.1 billion bond that you're asking us to vote for. I also read here that you invited an organization, or I shouldn't say you invited, you allowed an organization called Saving Our Daughters to come into our, one of our schools and educate multicultural girls beyond the classroom setting and breaking down social constructs around bullying, mental health, and low self-esteem. And my opinion is that it excluded everybody except this one group, and that is the very definition of discrimination when you exclude other groups. And I think boys and other groups have issues with bullying, mental health, and low self-esteem as well, and they should be included in this, this type of thing. Mr. Paramo, I kind of owe you an apology, because at the last meeting, I left out something. We were talking about people who can vote for this bond in Burbank, and I said that you folks can't vote for it because you don't live here. The other group that I forgot to mention is the thousands of students and parents that you invite into our district, that you allow into our district every year, that will never get a property tax bill because they don't live in Burbank, but it leaves all of us that do to pay for it. So that's, that's one thing that I noticed. I noticed in this bond language that you passed at the last meeting that it allows you to buy more land, and I specifically wonder why that language is in there. Do you have a hidden agenda? I'm looking at you, Mr. Ferguson, because I know that you said you want to build housing for your teachers and get all of us to subsidize it through this bond. So I wonder if that's something that you're up to, or maybe the pre-K, I guess that's daycare, you were talking about that. I wonder if you want to build a daycare facility? I was wondering about that, because the bond, the bond language allows you to do it. Ms. Parker, Ms. Parker, Ms. Ponsor-Campclark, excuse me. You were gracious enough to share with us that you're going to spend, based on your assessment of your home, $550 a year, and you had no problem paying it. And I absolutely respect you and your decision for that. That's your personal choice. So I took that five, that $555 and took it out over the 30 years at 5% interest, and you're really paying $40,000. And then I took it to, I asked Google what the average return was in the stock market the past 30 years, and it's 10-point something percent, 10.22, and it's $110,000. But it's even more than that, because I didn't factor in the 2% increases every year that the county does to our tax bills. Would you be surprised to learn that the first year, you're going to pay $550, but 10 years later, you're going to pay $657? And that's just what the math says. It's not me, it's the math. So I'm all about you and your choices, but I think everybody should make informed decisions. That this thing, this bond, is going to cost everybody a lot. It's going to be a hardship on a lot of people, particularly our senior citizens, particularly our people on fixed incomes, particularly our renters, because it's going to cause the cost of milk and eggs and all the other necessities of life, and it doesn't factor in that our utilities are going to double. So we've got a lot of things to be scared, scared of. No doubt about that in Burbank. There's nothing we can do to stop it, other than, you know, we have inflation. We all understand what inflation is. But this bond, if we vote no, that will stave off $1.1 billion, and it will send a message to the five of you to live within your means, like all of us have to do. Can I have another two minutes like you gave that other lady?
No.
Have a good evening.
Next up is Annie, followed by Armin. Oh, no, I'm sorry, RC first. RC then Annie, just in the order of the way I received the cards.
Okay, so, good evening. I'm RC, a parent from Miller Elementary. My frustration comes from when, on May 25th, going to the school open house, discovered that the librarian is inviting fourth and fifth grade graders to a new club called Rainbow Club. I'm shocked for the lack of transparency from the school and the district. We parents were never notified and sent any permission slips. We were never told about this new club, especially about such a club that is all about sexual orientation and very inappropriate for young kids to be exposed to. This is not acceptable in an elementary school, and if you're doing it, every single parent should be notified. It is very inappropriate for the young kids to be invited secretly to a club without their parents' knowledge. My second objection was towards a flyer posted by, once again, the librarian, that portrays Armenians as an inferior nationality and says, "It's okay to be Armenian." So basically, since it's not the norm, or it's not cool to be Armenian, she is trying to say it's okay to be one. I, as an Armenian immigrant, find this very offensive. I've lost a lot of trust and respect towards this school for doing things secretly. How can I be assured that they are not teaching or brainwashing our kids with more stuff? Because this is illegal when a parent of an underage student is not notified about a curriculum or an activity happening in the school. I demand the board and the district to look into these two flyers and make proper action and changes. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, esteemed board members and talented staff. Annie Markarian, 30-year Burbank resident, and I'm here today to comment on the Fiscal Services Action Plan. A well-executed Fiscal Services Action Plan holds the potential to drive efficiency and fiscal responsibility. To that end, I would like to acknowledge the sheer amount of work it has taken and will continue to take to address the 40-plus recommendations set forth in the Thicmat Report. Mr. Cantwell, I don't envy the path ahead of you. For this to be effective, there must be regular monitoring, training, evaluation, and adjustments to comply with best practices. This cannot be a one-and-done. So with that as a background, I think there are two critical components that are missing from the presentation. The first is accountability and transparency. To address this, I'd like to propose that you develop a dashboard that sets forth the recommendations, action items needed to complete those recommendations, the status of those action items, target dates for completion, and the point of contact for each action item. The dashboard, which can be as simple as a shared spreadsheet, should be included on the consent agenda on a regular basis, probably quarterly. Having this type of collaboration is crucial to ensure that the plan is implemented effectively with transparency monitoring mechanisms in place to track progress and address any challenges that may arise. Public involvement and feedback mechanisms should also be integrated to foster trust and accountability. Second, I'd like you to consider the value offered by your independent auditors. I question how you could have regular internal audits and still have had so many operational processes and procedures that were not in line with best practices. And finally, I'd like to comment on the new account analyst classification that's being developed. I think the incumbent will have a very heavy lift ahead of them. I hope their goals will be clearly defined, and the metrics against which they will be evaluated will be set forth early so they can be successful in serving in this critical role. Thank you.
Armin, followed by Karen Tadrosian.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Armin. I'm a proud parent. I'm a fourth grader at Miller Elementary School. The reason why I'm here is, two weeks ago, there was an open house, and the parents went into the open house and they saw a bunch of posters, Rainbow Club. The parents had no idea. No emails were sent, no notifications, no letters, no text messages. This was done privately and secretly behind the parents' back. The California Board of Education does not require that a club require parental signatures on a, on a permission slip. It's a recommendation. There's an elementary school called McKinley Elementary School, and I'll read the paragraph for you when they opened up the Rainbow Club, and you can tell the difference between that school and how Miller opened up their Rainbow Club. "I sent out an email blast to the whole school community, parents and staff announcing the Rainbow Club and explaining its purpose so everyone was informed. We received a lot of wonderful feedback and great support from McKinley community regarding this inclusive activity. I also provided a parent permission slip so parents can sign up their fourth and fifth graders if interested. While at the middle and high school level, a parent permission slip might not be as needed for extracurricular clubs. At the elementary school level, just given the age, you want to make sure parents were informed and involved." If this is an involuntary club, why are posters all over the school? The librarian goes around all day and displays posters. She goes around and just keeps on retaping the posters. What is her, what is her message here? Is it political? I mean, I don't mind a Rainbow Club, just let the parents know. Parents should be know, know about this. What if their, their kid walks into a Rainbow Club, and you guys don't require a parent permission slip? What is being taught there? Please let me know what the activities are of a Rainbow Club. Are there books being read? Are there movies being shown? What goes on in our Rainbow Club? Mr. Paramo told, told an email from 70 different people that emailed him 48 hours after the open house. His message was, "A parent permission slip is not required." But in other California elementary schools, they require it. And when did the board approve this club? Why weren't the parents notified? Next topic was a poster in the school library orchestrated by the librarian. Again, this is what it, what it reads. "Gay is not a bad word. Some of us are gay. Some of us are short. Some of us are Armenian. Some of us are Muslim. Some of us are girls. Some of us are kids." I spoke to Mr. Paramo in his office, and also Mr. Knappick. Mr. Paramo told me in his office on February 29th that he thought it was offensive towards Armenians. And he also told me that he spoke to Mr. Ferguson and Ms. Weisberg, and they also told him that they thought it was offensive, and they're not Armenians. How do you think I feel, as an Armenian-American, going into that poster, going into that school library, and my son is asking me, "Why are Armenians the only nationality mentioned? There's 195 countries in this world, thousands of languages are spoken, and why does it only say some of us are Armenian? Why is that?" And, and Mr. Knappick asked the librarian to revise that poster to make it more inclusive, which I agreed. I was for that, actually. But she still refused, and she refused to take that poster down. And she has alienated 90% of the parents at Miller Elementary School by our actions. We want transparency here. You want a Rainbow Club? That's okay. Let us know. Email us. Let us know. Have the parents sign a permission slip. That's all. The two or three parents that want a Rainbow Club, that's fine. How about the 70 people who emailed Mr. Paramo? What are our rights here? How about our civil rights? Thank you very much.
Karen Tadrosian, followed by Mark Tadrosian.
Thank you, everyone. My name is Kevin Tadovosian. I'm a father of nine-year-old at Miller Elementary, and I wanted to raise the concern a lot of parents have. Specifically, I'm curious about the Rainbow Club at Miller Elementary School. How does that club function, and what type of influence might it have on students, including my nine-year-old daughter? I'm specifically, specifically interested in understanding the nature of interactions within the club, as I am worried about the potential influence on my daughter by other club members. We wanted to know how the club promotes inclusivity and respect among the students. Thank you.
Thank you. Dala, I just, your writing is pretty, and I can't read it. I'm so sorry.
She's not here.
Oh, she's not here. Okay. Anna, oh, hell. I just don't, I want to do it justice.
Hi, hi, everyone. Hi, board members. Thank you for having this opportunity for us to talk to you. I'm gonna try to just talk without reading, but I might read, I don't know. I have a, my English is not good spoken, so, sorry about that. Yeah? Thank you. Okay, so I have two kids, 10, almost 10 years old and 8 years old. My son loves reading. He loves history. He knows everything about World War II. He loves going to library, and he started going to libraries since he was four, to Bonavista one. And my daughter, she's in gated program, even though she's still eight years old, but she's already in third grade, and she's very advanced. So I'm raising two kids, and they have very good questions sometimes for me. And when they saw, I mean, when, first, we saw the posters when we went to the open house, and we saw the posters, and they saw how surprised we were, and they started questioning and stuff. So we didn't know what to answer, because we were, we didn't know about it. Like, we were like, what? Like, what is it? We don't know. Like, and it was so bad. Like, why? Why? Like, okay, why? At least we could be notified, right? Like, okay, we don't have anything against, but at least we could notify, so we know what our kids are, you know, offered in schools to have. And basically, we made a poll towards the parents, between the parents, and people, Miller parents, they voted, and everyone... and everyone voted saying that no one was notified. And we wrote an email to our superintendent. We asked the following questions. What are the policies for approving new clubs in elementary schools? How are parents involved in the process of approving new schools? Are students supposed to receive approval? And basically, it turns out that, you know, Miller School is not the only school that is facing this. There is also this Yelk Grove School in California. And there was a lawsuit going on over there. We are basically gonna try to find out everything about it. Not, I am not ready to open everything about it, but we're gonna stop this. This is gonna stop. Club will be closed. And basically, our, because the only reason that this club will be closed is because it was not done in transparent way. If it was done in transparent way, we could swallow this. But because it was done behind our backs, it is not acceptable. Not at all. And I'm educated. I have master's degree in computer science. I did it in Calstat LA. And it's not like I don't understand. I do understand a lot of stuff. And we just want transparency. Thank you.
Uh, let's see. I can't, oh, read the, is it Nanine? I just can't read the writing. Can you just pronounce the last name? Maybe that will help.
She's not here.
Thank you. Uh, thank you. Next, we have Christina Considine, followed by Jerry Malady.
Good evening, board members. Good evening, district staff. Sorry, it's been a long day. My name is Christina Considine. I am a math teacher here at Luther Burbank Middle School. It was wonderful seeing our presentation today. One person, or one group of people I want to highlight as well is our PTSA and all of our parent volunteers. They're such an integral part of some of those amazing things that we showed off today. So I want them to know, we very much appreciate them as well. But I'm also here tonight because I want to bring some awareness to middle school math in particular. Because again, that's what I teach. Right now, we're in the process, our admin are in the process of creating next year's master schedules. So we're starting to hear bits and pieces of our enrollment numbers and like what classes and how many we're gonna have of each one. And so there's this one area I want to talk about. And that's, in the middle school, there are eight different math classes that we all offer. So when you're in sixth grade, depending on how well you score in elementary school, you will be offered a grade level, sixth grade math, or you have advanced 6-2 or advanced 6-3. So families are notified that their kids qualify and they get to choose what level they want to go in based on their scores. And then, but depending on how well they do in sixth grade, seventh grade, they can be in seventh grade math, 7-2, or if they were a super advanced, they could be in algebra. And then in eighth grade, they could be in eighth grade math. We could have eighth grade algebra students and we could have eighth grade geometry. So that's a lot of classes, right? So my one big concern is I know with the budget, I know the money is horrible, and I know we're really trying to get the 34 to 1, 35 to 1, 36, whatever it is ratio in our classrooms, and we understand that. But with math in particular, you can't simply take the number of students and divide by 34 and make that many classes. It doesn't work. Because we're gonna have maybe 80 algebra students. That's two classes of 40, which we can't do, right? We don't have 40 desks in our classroom. We can't teach 40 kids efficiently at once, right? Or maybe we're gonna have a class of 6-2 that's only 30 kids. So it's smaller, right? My geometry, the past few years, has only been 27 students. So that's way under the ratio that the district is going for. So what I want us just to be aware of at this time is when our middle school administrators are looking at our numbers and they're saying, "Okay, I have more than one class worth for some of these classes, but that's gonna bump me into needing an extra section." When they come to you at the district and say, "I need approval for an extra point two for this math section", I don't want that to be a battle. Because I know money's tight, but at the same time, if the district is telling all these families, "We're offering all of these amazing and math-advanced tracks", we can't turn them away and say, "Sorry, the class is full", and we can't put them in a class that's too large. And then on the same path, if we then have some smaller classes, if they didn't get approval of those extra point twos for our employee number, that's gonna mess up our classes in other areas, right? So some of our classes that were gonna be at 35 are gonna have to get even larger. Or maybe some other departments are gonna have to absorb those classes and get even larger. So just on behalf of math and just the way our middle school is structured, I really just urge you to listen to our admin when they come to you guys and say, "We really need that extra section so we can offer all the 6-2s or we can offer all the algebras", especially with some of our students that are choosing advanced summer classes to get into some of those, right? So that's it. I just wanted to bring that up, guys. Thank you so much.
Jerry Malady, followed by Sadie Rogers.
Thank you, President Weisberg, members of the school board, Dr. Paramo and school staff, and would you say 150 viewers? My name is Jerry Malady. I'm a teacher at John Burrell's High School. Ooh. And I'm a teacher at Burbank Unified School District. And, but I've also been in Burbank for a long time. I mean, my roots go back to 1965 at Willie McKinley and 1994 at John Burrell's Senior High School. 74, sorry. My ears are really off today. It's your fault. A little bit of history lesson here just to get started. The day after tomorrow, May 4th, there's some really major events that happened that day back in the late 1800s was the Haymarket Square massacre about unionism. And in 1970 was the Kent State shootings in 1970. There's one more, but I'll tell you at the end of my speech here. And also, I was, I don't know, this was not part of my speech originally. But at Burrell's High School, the class ahead of me, the founder of the Trevor Project, if you know who that is, he was in that class. So we have a tie with our school district here. And I was really concerned, especially we just saw a bunch of Holocaust speakers speak out yesterday at Burrell's. I'm really nervous because of our GLTQ plus children that maybe people need to realize that the highest population of adolescent suicides is LGBTQ plus. Just to let us know as we get too excited about things going on in here. Okay, since I am getting old. Okay, one of the things, my colleague here was just talking about how class sizes get larger. Now, as this pandemic, we've got this Chromebook situation. Now, do we use Chromebooks? We do not use Chromebooks? Are they mandatory? Are they not mandatory? All this stuff. This has to get settled down because it's just a mess. Because they said, "Well, I don't need to use a Chromebook. I can use my MacBook from home." Or, "Well, I just use my phone", which, of course, if you've ever been in a classroom, they're not really using their phone on anything class-related. And I keep telling them that, "You better hurry up because TikTok's gonna be banned soon", but they don't. So I really think that these need to be real. Because I mean, I know, like, teachers like myself have been, since the pandemic, I've been using the Chromebooks more and more, but it's hit and miss, you know? And I think, are we gonna do it? Are we going back to just paper? I mean, let us know because this is not working out. And I'm telling you right now, as a teacher, and this is like, I'm getting close to being a retired teacher, is that this phone thing is out of control. I mean, it is so out of control. You will not, you come at the beginning of the period, all of them are on their phones, all of them. They walk down the hall, they're on their phones. They're on, it's just, if you're not in the classroom, you do not understand how this is. Yeah, and also, and I know, like, there's certain schools that do require, like, a tablet that they can block sites. It's just, it's just the school stuff, like, just the textbooks and such. However, Dr. Andrews. It's kind of interesting that some things that we need to use in our sites, we can't use because it's blocked. And there's been times I've asked Rick Vaughn about that and like, "Well, it's okay to have that blocked." Well, okay, here's like, one thing really interesting. Is it okay for the conservative sites to be open but the progressive sites to be blocked? That's kind of interesting, I think. Sometimes it might be a video that we want to show and that, you know, it's blocked. There's a firewall. And, you know, when you're in the middle of trying to get lesson plan, like, "Oh, well, I'll tap dance around this." So I think some of that, I mean, I think it's good for the kids to have stuff blocked, but I think maybe we need a little more openness for us to be educators to help that out. Okay, now, about this phones, as part of it, and I think, Dr. Paramo, you mentioned a little bit about safety and I say I've got 41 minutes left. Is that, I have nothing to get, I mean, first off, excuse me, Mr. Nup is like, one of the best things in my mind in the last 24 years I've been at Burrell's. It's happened there in terms of administration. So I don't want nothing against Mr. Nup. But there's a lot of us as staff that feel like it's hard to discipline because we feel we're not being backed up. You know, and one of the things I really want to fear of is that, especially with, I, as my first year, I've taught 10th grades since 2005, and I was talking to my ninth-grade colleagues, and racism is creeping in really rampantly in the school that I have not seen in the years I've been there. I mean, I've been called some racist term. May I please have more minutes? I don't know, maybe two? Wrap it up?
Yeah.
Okay, I can wrap it up. The other point was, at 9:10 PM on May 4th, I'm eligible for the Jocelyn Center.
Dr. Macias, I like that idea about catering to the teachers, and I knew you have an in at our side for that to happen.
Okay, next up is Sadie Rogers, followed by Autumn Barasimian. Please correct me when you get up here because I think I mangled it. I'm sorry.
Hello, thank you all for being here tonight. My name is Sadie Rogers. I am a parent. I also work for BUSD. I have three kids, one at Muir, and two at Miller. My kiddo was the one that started the Rainbow Club. So I really wanted to get up here and express gratitude for the, the importance on diversity and inclusion and how that plays a role in the educational system because I think it's big. And how the Rainbow Club supports that. Looking at the difference between my kiddo at the beginning of the year. We were doing weekly therapy sessions, really trying to find a space. And with the help of the librarian, with the help of, thank you. And with the help of certain staff at Miller Elementary, we were able to get the Rainbow Club going. And I can't tell you what the difference has made in my child. So I'm just grateful. They look forward to going to school every day now when that wasn't the case before. I can tell you what goes on in the Rainbow Club. They sit around, they eat lunch, and they gossip like normal little kids. So if you want the tea, that's the tea. Sometimes they make buttons and it's really cute. So I'm just, I, I can't thank you enough for the support around this area. It really does make a difference. I actually would like to find some common ground and I think a common ground with this is visibility, is no secrecy. I would love to send Rainbow Club flyers out to every parent and say, "Please come, your kids are welcome." Always, you know? Because I do think that secrecy is not a good idea. I think we should be celebrating everyone for who they are, where they come from, what they believe. I think that, that safety that you were talking about earlier, a safe environment facilitates really incredible growth and learning for our students. And I've seen it personally with my kiddo, with all my kids. So thank you for all that you do and the support of that.
Thank you. Autumn is next. And our last card is Ms. Britta Maslik.
Hello, my name is Autumn Barasimian, and I married into that one. I'm still struggling to pronounce it, too. My daughter helped co-found the Rainbow Club. We, we've had a very difficult journey this year with bullying. We've, I've actually, I never thought I would be a parent who worried about childhood suicide. And it's actually been a very real fear and concern in our family. And I want to share with you what my daughter Kira said about the Rainbow Club. She would like you to know this. "It's a safe space community where kids can express themselves and expect zero hatred for being who they are. No one is obligated or forced to go. You do not have to be queer, but you do have to be respectful. What we do there is talk about our feelings and we do fun crafts. The club exists for the students to have a safe environment away from stress or bullying." I think that some parents may be scared of what they don't know and they may be worried that their children are pressured to go to Rainbow Club. That's not the case. Kira and some of the other members created flyers so that kids who wanted to go knew that it was a welcome, safe space for the LGBTQ community and the allies. And this is something that we need to have for these kids. It's very important that they feel safe and loved and accepted and can be around other kids with those same feelings in a safe space. Thank you.
Good evening, board members. Good evening, district staff. I wanted to come before you tonight. My name is Britta Maslik. I'm a counselor at Burbank High School. And I wanted to give you a little snapshot of a day in the life of a counselor for the reason that counselors are in part being funded by our LCAP Supplemental Fund. And I think I sent you an email all last night just about some of the concerns. But I wanted to just share a little bit about what a day looks like. So I got there this morning and a student was in crisis, brought into my office. Not my student, the counselor that the student had wasn't available at the time. Sat with the student, got some other staff that needed to be helping out in this particular situation. Once that situation was settled, a new student enrollment that was very complicated, took a couple hours to figure out, then went to an IEP, then had about two hours to call in the students that had requested to see me. So I saw about 20 students during that time. It was a lot. Usually, I try not to see that many in a couple hours. And then I ended my day with an IEP. I love my job. It actually energizes me because I come into work every day and I am never, ever bored. You know, I just, I'm not. I love it. Time flies by. I love people. I love students. I love to see personal growth. And so I love what you asked, Ms. Habit. How are these activities going to impact you in the future, the electives that you're taking? And I am so grateful that currently we have six counselors available, that we have one intervention specialist, Mr. Elias Uribe, who, if you have not met him, is an icon. His demeanor, his relationship with students is unmatched. And he also, or his position next year, is also something that we're very concerned about. My colleague from Luther did an amazing job enumerating all of the relationships of these folks that may be not here next year. And so I, I'm sharing this tonight because, as my email said, I have some ideas and I think this was a slogan many years. And I think this was a slogan many years ago, for those of you who are around, make cuts away from the classroom. I would say make cuts away from the student center as well, where the counselors and intervention specialists are. Let's really look at where we're spending money. Let's spend money on people, not the programs. Um, programs are amazing, but if you don't have people to run them or to support them, then it's just a shell. So, uh, would love to speak with you individually about my ideas because tonight's not the right time. I want to thank Mr. Cantrell for giving me the budget. Um, I was able to look at it, um, have some ideas about that as well. So I don't know if there's a meeting sometime that you would like to invite me to. Would love to come. Anyhow, so thank you for your time tonight and look forward to your responses in my email. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last card is Arno Dionysian, Arno Dionysian, sorry.
Good evening, board. Madam President and rest of you. My name is Arno Dionysian. I'm a senior at Burbank High School. I just want to talk about a few things. Uh, first of all, it was very moving to hear from, um, some parents in elementary school about their children's experience. And I was going to come up here and talk about, um, you know, the, the general philosophy that parents obviously have some certain rights and they have a stake in their children's education, and they have a right to be informed about certain things as per state and federal law. The greatest right, I would contend however, especially in public education, is the right to vote. Uh, although parents have, uh, some autonomy over it with their children learn, they do have the right to go to the ballot box, to run for office. And if they so disagree with the policies board puts forward, they also have the right to run to replace you all. And in, in public education, that's the biggest right any citizen has, parent or otherwise. Uh, I also want to point out, my, 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 one to come up and talk about was, um, the bond measure, because I didn't have anything in mind, but I thought it was interesting that a figure was brought up that, um, it was Ms. Ponsor Campcar. You've done the math and figured out that you're, 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 you're total for, uh, for, um, how much you would end up paying, um, I think for, it was for the parcel tax was the math. Sorry, bond measure, uh, was somewhere around some several hundred dollars. And it was brought up that you, you know, it was suggested that that may be your personal decision, um, but, uh, that may not be the decision of other voters. That's why they get to vote. I mean, uh, that goes to make a point, to make an argument. And being a board member yourself, Ms. Ponsor Campcar does also have the right to vote herself. And so, um, whatever's said on the, the dais is not, um, some kind of manipulation. And another figure is brought up that it might be misunderstanding, but the idea that, you know, there was a certain appreciation value in the stock market, that that amount of dollars put into the market would have appreciated to a certain, certain hundreds of thousands. And while that is true, our economy is always growing. We are blessed to live, um, you know, on this side of the Atlantic. I would contend education, like anything else, is just as big an investment in that certain, I think it was, like, uh, I think it was an English teacher of mine, and actually did the math and found out, you know, during graduation, the total number of dollars invested in students on, on that field, that's, you know, the total number of dollars invested in students that he had taught in, as Burbank High would have been something around $72 million, public dollars, which is a sizable sum. Those students will go on to work and to produce and to overall contribute to the economy, and that will, that $72 multiplied tenfold. So to contend that a stock market is a greater investment than education is simply economically not true. Um, and so if that was the argument for any one voter not to vote for, um, any investment in education, um, yeah, well, that's my two cents. Thanks.
Thank you, Arno. Always, always great to have you here. I believe that that is our final card. So we are going to move on to superintendent responses, followed by board member responses.
Thank you so much. Uh, there were a lot of public speakers, uh, on a lot of different topics, uh, and I want to give respect to anybody that's been here. Uh, I'll try to be concise, but there were just so many. Leanne, I, I'm sorry, we, we have to do better. And I acknowledge that. We have been in cabinet and have had several conversations about how to take care of the facilities issue. Can tell you that we're working on that. Yes, we're working on finding deaf and hard of hearing professionals to be able to fill in when we need them to fill in. I, I would, I will say to you with all honesty that the last three weeks have been saturated in this topic. And I think we will get to some good outcomes. Uh, I'm just sorry that you and your child had to go through that, and I apologize. Don Barnes, uh, thank you for being here. You know, I really appreciate that you, uh, love this school so much and you love the profession so much, and I mean that wholeheartedly. Uh, and you always keep me accountable, and I don't mind that. I care about kids. I care about our district. And when we spoke earlier to the Luther staff, uh, about particularly your AP, uh, Assistant Principal, I was adamant that that was something that we need to, needed to say. Uh, I have said that publicly with principals in cabinet, in executive cabinet for the better part of nine months. And it was the very last thing that I was willing to give up. I did not expect to get a phone call from the county superintendent to talk to me about Burbank's budget. I could not anticipate that. And it was a tough conversation when she's there with her entire fiscal team, telling me that we need to do more and we need to cut more. And I wasn't prepared for that. I was prepared mentally of where we had to go in the future. I thought I had more time. It's difficult to create a budget based on a COLA that is advertised and shared with the people of the state of California in January. And then you hear all the rumors and gossip about it not being funded come May. That is a $1.7 million deficit, but not just for one year. That's 1.7 each year for three years. That's the hole we'd have to cover. That's why we've had to look at these additional cuts. That's why instead of a, just a March 15th layoff notice, we have to move into an August 15th layoff notice in addition. Not where I want to be. I know that it's going to be hard. I also will share with you, not that it's any consolation, that this isn't just happening to Luther Burbank Middle School. So in that sense, there is equity in a very bad way. So, uh, it's hopefully you will at least take away the fact that, because I can see why the staff felt this way before. This isn't isolated or focused on a specific school, but it's looking at what we have to do across the grade span and across, across that level. I wish I had better news. If we get better news from the governor, uh, obviously I'll go back and, and relook. I, I'm just not going to hold my breath. I suggest you don't hold your breath because I don't think that's happening. Joel Schlossman, I totally appreciate your comments today. Uh, I recognize that the people, the students that we take in on permit, uh, are not paying taxes in the city of Burbank. They are generating, uh, a lot of money for us in order to keep our schools going, well over a million dollars. Uh, and in our fiscal situation, I, I don't know how we'd be able to do it without that. I will tell you that we have become very, very prudent and assertive in evaluating all our permits at the end of the year. Over the last two years, we've, um, actually taken a real deep dive on those kids that are on permit to make sure that they're still holding up their agreement for the, which is the basis for which they're here. So their attendance has to be good, their grades have to be good, their discipline has to be good. If not, we'll revoke your permit because you're here on condition. And if you want to be here, then you're going to have to meet your obligation. Uh, and we have been, uh, very assertive about that. Annie, I totally get, uh, your perspective on the budget. She's not here. Uh, I'm not going to get into specifics in all honesty because I can't, I'm not a finance guy, but we got a presentation today. I think your, um, your, uh, questions will be answered, and I welcome any conversation that you might want to have. Christina, I, you are speaking my language about the master schedule. I did it for so long. There are things you don't know that I think will help you to feel better. Did you know that we don't use the same divisor when figuring out FTE for middle school that we do in high school? And the reason is because we know that the master schedule in middle school is significantly harder. High school people don't know that. They think theirs is harder. It's not harder, it's easier. It takes longer because there's more kids, but it's actually significantly more complex at the middle school. And for that reason, you don't have as much wiggle room to move kids around. It's easier when you have 25 English nine classes because you can move any of those around. There's so many, but you can't do that at the middle school. We know that. We know that. That's why we create a buffer at the beginning to make sure that you have the wiggle room, particularly in math. So when you talk about, you know, uh, algebra class with 80 kids and that's two classes of 40, we totally get that. We totally prepare for that. And I'm going to say with all confidence, because I was in charge of the secondary for the last 10 years, there's not a principal who hasn't gotten the FTE they needed to make their master schedule work ever. So if your principal comes and says to me, this is what my situation is, let me tell you what the answer is going to be. Print your master schedule, come over to the district office, let's take a look at it, and I'm going to ask a million questions. And when I, are you going to, did you try this? Did you try that? Can we move this over here? And when we get through the entire process, if they need the additional FTE, they will get the additional FTE, I promise. Jerry Mulady, I couldn't agree more. Man, phones, cell phones, high school, middle school, even elementary, you'd be surprised about elementary. You would be surprised. They're the same issues. We are working on it. Member Clerk, uh, Ponsor Campcar requested a report to the board. Uh, so, uh, Dr. Knappick and Dr. Masias are working with our different levels of principals, and we will bring back some, uh, proposals on how we can address, uh, our cellphone situation moving forward. I will save, um, the last I want to talk about, and there were several people that spoke, and that is in regards to the Rainbow Club at Miller Elementary School. I had a very significant discussion with Mr. Cantwell in his office, uh, a couple days ago, because, um, I was feeling so much pressure about this topic, about Rainbow Club. And, um, I needed to talk to somebody about it. I needed to vent. I needed to get perspective. And it was a really good conversation, and it really helped me to process and it helped me to define my own, uh, beliefs about this club and what it means. I will be very brief, but I will tell you that I grew up in a very loving family that was very religious. Uh, my parents were not cafeteria Catholics. They were strict Catholics. And growing up, we went to church on Wednesday for benediction and we went to church on Sunday. And I was an altar boy and it was a lot. And I can tell you that as much as I knew my parents loved me, I also knew that there was a part of me that was afraid to tell them who I was, because I didn't want to disappoint them, because I didn't, uh, I didn't want them to be upset. So a day in a life for me was going to school and hiding who I was, which was exhausting because I went to an all-boys Catholic school, which was really hard. It was not good for me. It was so hard. And you would think I could come home and find some relief, and that is not the case because I still had to keep that up when I went home because I didn't want to disappoint my parents. And then I'd go to church on Sunday and hear from the preacher, the pastor, that even when I died, I wasn't going to go to the good place. So I'm going to tell you, at a very young age, I started thinking to myself, well, what the heck is the point then? I'm not even going to die and go to a good place, really? You know, I could have probably benefited from a Rainbow Club where for 20 minutes I could just throw myself on a chair and not worry about anybody looking at me like I was a freak, where I could breathe, that I can actually exhale, where nobody was going to make fun of me, and that I didn't have to feel alone because some of the people there knew exactly what I was going through. It would have been absolutely amazing for me. I was at the high school for 20 years. Let me tell you what I know. You form a Pacific Islanders Club, they get together and meet in so-and-so's classroom. They don't sit there and talk about Pacific Islander stuff. They do not. They are a group of people that find commonality with each other, and they sit and talk about their weekend or whatever, and that's what they do. They're looking for a place to be with the people that they know they can relate to and just relax. There's no curriculum about what happened in the history of Asian Pacific Islanders. There's none of that. This is not any different for a Rainbow Club. These are kids that are trying to find a spot where they can feel accepted, safe, and supported, even if it's for 15 minutes. And that's important, and they need to have that. I totally respect anybody who does not align with the Rainbow Club because of their personal beliefs. I totally respect that, just based on how I grew up. I respect that. You do have rights, and your rights are to not participate in the club. You have the right to not do that. I will say to you that we could do better, we need to do better, and we will do better in talking about it and preparing the community. I'm not at the school site at Miller every day for hours at a time. I am not. That's, I'm not there. If I had to guess, and it's purely a guess, it's scary. It's scary to be a principal and know that this club, which is going to be good for kids, is going to upset a lot of people. That's got to be really scary. But what I think we need to do is to stop being afraid and to start having open conversation, and that includes all of us. That includes administrators, that includes teachers, it's all of us. We will do a better job in communicating so it doesn't feel like there's anything going on that's sneaky, because there isn't anything going on that is sneaky. And I'm just really frustrated and I'm disappointed that the, a club that is this important is coming about under this veil of what seems to be secrecy or non-transparent, which is not what I'm about. So to the folks that came here, I acknowledge that. We will, uh, work with our team at Miller, and we will do better with that and with communicating. Uh, this is an important club for some of our kids. In fact, I will say that it could be life-saving for some. And the fact that, uh, it's at Miller is a good thing. And I know that the majority of our community recognizes that it's our diversity that makes us so strong and so special, uh, and it's something that should be celebrated, uh, and we, and we need to get behind that. And, uh, I, I, I believe that our community will.
Nobody can follow that. Um, all right, we're going to move to board member responses. Mr. Ferguson. Ms. Tabit.
First of all, thank you. Sorry. I'm sorry too. No, it just hit me all of a sudden. I, I, I wasn't going to say anything, but, um, a friend of mine, a good friend of mine, someone I consider part of my family, who's a teacher. of mine, a good friend of mine, someone I consider part of my family who's a teacher at Miller, described to me one day, um, as she was talking to a kindergarten student about the pride flag and what it meant, because a student asked, what is that? What does that mean? And she said to him, I thought, rather profoundly for a kindergarten child, to say, it means that everybody belongs here. Everybody's welcome. Everybody has a space, a safe space. And I thought, oh, perfect. That's exactly it. And, and I, I think even the parents who came to speak out against the Rainbow Club didn't quite understand how it even applied to them. Of the four or five that came up, more than half of them said they were immigrants to the United States. Well, guess what? You're welcome. You belong. You're safe here, and that's what that Rainbow Club says. You're a part of that. And I, I just, I just hope they hear that message, that that's what it means, that you're welcome. We appreciate you for who you are, whatever, like the poem said, whatever category you fit in, doesn't matter. You're welcome. You're loved because you're a human being. I also want you to know that that teacher said about your young lady, that one day she's going to rule this world. And that just made my heart sing because I want those opportunities for, for all our kids to grow and become whoever it is they are and use those skills to make this world a better place. So, okay. Um, thank you for letting me say that part and sorry for... Thanks. Um, Christina Wisconsin, Don, my old neighbor, Don. That's fun about Burbank, isn't it? Britta, yeah, cuts suck. I know. They're awful because they affect kids. And obviously that's, you know, adults will figure it out. They'll, they'll roll, they'll groan, they'll be happy. It doesn't matter what we do, but those cuts, cuts do affect kids. And our hands are so tied this time. Over the last, uh, eight or nine, 10 years now that I've been on the board, I've seen cuts. I've seen money come in and we're really good at putting it out there. We've done tremendous raises in the last six or eight years, uh, for our, for our staff members, um, which I think is a good thing when we can. But there's going to come, you know, what, what's that old saying? What goes up must come down? Here we are. We're in the down. And there's been a few years where we have made drastic cuts, as one of you said, far away from the classroom, at, at the district office, at, in upper levels. And it was okay for a while, but it began to trickle down where I think some of those cuts started to affect what went on at school sites and the, and the classroom. And I don't think we can make any more cuts in those areas. And now it's come to the point where those cuts unfortunately are going to be felt at the school site level. And it's awful. It's an awful feeling. Um, but I have a great deal of trust in our leadership. And I also have trust and faith in you as Mrs. Maslik has done with, with your emails, like, oh, this might not be the right place. Let's look over here. We need to hear those things. We need to hear when we get it right and we need to hear when we get it wrong, it, from your perspective. So let's keep that dialogue open and going. Share with us your thoughts. It's appreciated. Um, we need to hear it because you said it best. You're not at a school site every day. You can make these decisions based on the best information you have at that moment, but it, it may not always work out at the end, and we need to know and we need to fix as we go. It's going to be a crucial time for us to all really band together and work well and tightly together over at least the next three years, uh, as we see where we go from here. Let's see. Again, um, is it Arno, the senior from BHS?
Yes.
He's so fun, so great to listen to. I just love it when students come in and say, um, positive, thought-provoking, uh, ideas. And, uh, and it, it, he's a lot of fun. So thank you for taking the time to come down. Um, please, if I don't specifically say your name, it doesn't mean that I didn't think what you said was important or mattered. It does. Um, there's just a lot. So I, uh, thank, congratulated Frank. I just wanted to make sure. Um, congratulations to our, uh, schools, um, sports, um, and performing arts programs. I went, uh, do we have another spot in the?
We do.
Thank you so much for the moment today.
Thank you. Mr. Ferguson?
Uh, thank you to everybody who came down tonight. Um, Leanne, um, thank you for illuminating, uh, in some ways. Um, I have a lot of follow-up questions. So, um, I am happy, uh, to connect when, when you're able to. Um, it's good to see you. I haven't seen you in a bit. Yeah. Um, um, wish under better circumstances, obviously. Um, so I, I, I'm going to be checking with staff, but I would naturally think we've tested every stroke, right? I, we, that, this is not anywhere, um, occurring at this moment in time. So I want to thank staff for reviewing. We've had two, we've had a variety of situations that I want to check in about, just that, uh, we're making sure. It is hard to maintain these systems. They are complex, um, but it shouldn't impact our kids in this way, uh, and put them at such potential risk. And it, it's just, it's, it's a lot. So I, I don't, uh, I'm not saying that in an angry way, but I am saying that in a way that just wants to understand things. Um, and so thank you, uh, to staff for getting on this already. Um, I just, I have a ton of questions. Um, and we'll talk offline. Um, to Ms. Quonstein and, and, uh, Ms. Barnes, thank you for coming down, always advocating for Luther. Um, and for being, I could, I could see you in the crowd, but I wondered what you were, what, what today's topic, um, would be in particular, not, and I don't say that in a, in a cynical way. It may have sounded like that, but it really shouldn't have. Um, because I've learned a lot from the Luther community on just all the different components of how things come together. Why? Because you've had to question it more directly, right? And, and for other schools, they tend to just be there. Uh, so, and, and in the past, we've, we've, I think, made significant progress. There's clearly more and we're checking in, but I am, uh, just grateful, uh, because it's a night and day difference from a year ago, to have a superintendent geek out about a, a divisor, um, when setting a class schedule. And I'm grateful for that because there's professionals at the helm who can empathize, get it, and get down to that level and say, I'm not afraid to go here. Um, and that to me brings real accountability. And, and thank you for listening in that way, uh, and, and being the professional you are. Um, I still want to understand it better. So, thank you. Uh, to Mr. Mulady, um, uh, it is, oh, oh, he's still here. Great. Uh, it is always great to see you. Uh, and I always learn something from you as well. One of the things you brought up today was Burbank's unique connection with the Trevor Project, uh, that one of the founders, has a connection here to Burbank. And, and I love that because decades later, when I started on the board, you know, uh, actually, what is it? Today is nine years and one day I've been on this board. Feels like, you know, holy crap, you know? But I haven't even been here a full generation of students yet, right? I've seen so many young people grow up and go on to college, and they're so impressive. And it inspires me as somebody who hopefully still has a bit to go in life. But the Trevor Project was the, one of the first organizations I was able to collaborate with after we had four suicides in the first years of my term. And we partnered with them, um, very early on to pass a suicide prevention policy, one of the most proactive in the state. Our unions joined us in that, co-signed that, jumped on board with us to pass that. And because of that, the Trevor Project was able to go and pass, I think it's AB 6983 something. I'll get the number up. But now, that now requires that training or those policies to be in place statewide. So now 800,000 employees who all go to work every day to educate are in some level, their work is informed to help stop this. We have been a community that's not just connected to the issue of prevention or the celebration of diversity. We, we have led. Our PTA council is here tonight. Talk about leadership. Throwing down, saying suburban parents, we're not afraid to deliver for kids. And even if it gets a little sensitive, we're not afraid to deliver for kids. But it's been a long nine years when the arguments are still the same. When I still hear chuckles in the back. When I still feel the need at times, and I'm not trying to be a wuss about it, to have somebody walk me out to my car. I'm 6'4". I feel like I can take on a decent amount, but I don't want to be alone at times going to my car. I worry when I walk my dog. Shouldn't be the case, but I'm a grown adult now. And when I think about kids, if they're experiencing that on any level, that's a level of fear I don't want to own. That's a level of fear I don't want to contribute to. What I saw tonight were parents, and I heard them too. I wasn't prepared. Dr. Pramo, thank you for hearing that too. Because especially as LGBT people and leaders, we have to dig deeper when we hear these things because our community is counting on us to be translators in some ways, in what ways we can be. And I heard parents who wanted to be equipped, to be able to have conversations who may not be equipped now. I can't find fault in that. And I want to give them those tools in a way that makes sense and helps. Hurt people hurt people. I've learned that line. Attacking these folks doesn't help move us forward. These are our neighbors. And most of them did not attack me or identity. They were afraid. And we need partners in communities, in school communities, who can help translate for us. Not talking about language. I'm talking about human being to human being, people who can connect and say, it's okay. Let me break this down for you. Sometimes it's easier to hear it from your best friend. If you can be that person, find an administrator and identify yourself. Hey, I can help have that conversation for you. Maybe we can start connecting and doing kind of a speakers bureau. We have some obligation to make sure we're saying the right things, obviously, but we need more translators in this world because we're getting awfully good at siloing ourselves. And we owe to those parents to reduce the overall fear around this. But I never want to hear the targeting of that librarian ever again, not in that way. It's not okay to make this about one person, because it is not. If a person happens to make a safe space for people to gather and they follow the rules in which are required to gather, that's the name. That's it. Game on. We're done. It's not a person. So knock that off. Because if I am fearing fearful, feeling fearful, don't pass on that fear. Don't be that model for your kids. Be better than that. Because I've sat in this chair for nine years and I don't have kids to fight for your kid because I believe in them. You can believe in me enough to take a risk. You can believe in that librarian enough who shows up, who doesn't get paid nearly what we should be paying people. You can believe in them enough to give them a chance to believe that they're here for the right reasons. To the kids who founded this thing, y'all's are heroes, to the parents of, I want to, I, I would love to meet and see, uh, I, I don't, I don't actually, I don't need to go to a club meeting, but I want to, uh, especially after a budget meeting. Um, but genuinely, um, we've been successful and historic on this front because Burbank has had these conversations, but it's had to have these conversations. I think I came out over 3,000 times when I ran for this office. It took that. The least we can do is talk about the things that make us feel weird. Let's do that to create a more inclusive community for our kids. Thank you.
Clerk Ponser Camp Car. Good, there we go. Um, all right. My notes are a mess, but I'm going to try to get to everybody. Um, so thank you to all the speakers for coming down. Um, Leanne, it sounds like I, I trust the staff is on top of this. I do want us to get an update added at least at the next closed session, just on where we're at. Um, I would appreciate that. Um, you know, I learned today, today I learned that April is Deaf History Month and September is Deaf Awareness Month. And the fact that we ha, like, I know that the programs that we have at Washington and Mura are a source of pride for us, and I want that to be the same for Burbank High. Um, and we should be recognizing those months, um, and lifting up our students. Um, you know, having recently observed over at Mura and gone into that classroom and, and seen, you know, the supports that those students were getting, it was, it was just really beautiful. And I want, um, yours then to have that experience as well. Um, uh, to Mrs. Barnes, just thanks for the rundown. Um, I think that was all super helpful information. Um, you know, as my colleagues have said, like, none of this is easy. Um, and certainly, you know, we had planned for a number of painful cuts and then it was like, actually, we need to make that wound like one foot deeper. Um, and so it's just, it's where we're at kind of right now. Um, but I appreciate you coming with like, these are the gaps that are going to be there, um, when this all goes down. And I, we need to have a plan to address those things. Um, Christina, I'm, you've got John, who's the master schedule master. Um, I mean, it's amazing. Like, he's told me, like, master scheduling is my jam. And now I, now he's like really put his money where his mouth is. So I'm, I know that we've got like kind of our pro in that particular area, but you know, I think those are all fair concerns to bring up. Um, I also, Luther's the one, the one math team that I have not yet visited, so that's on my list now. Although that brings me to Ms. Maslik, who I told I would visit last board meeting and my pesky day job got in the way. So still on my list. I know, rude, right? Asking me to do work for money. Um, but it is, it is going to happen because we've only got 15 days left of school. So it better happen ASAP. Um, which brings me to Mr. Mulady. Um, as Dr. Pramo said, I've asked for an agenda item on, um, cellphone usage. I've been working with staff to send them a number of model policies and model language around what we could have in kind of, as kind of a discipline framework around phones, how we could actually manage phones, um, when they're in the schools, whether, like, how that looks different for elementary, middle, high school. Um, there's a lot of moving pieces there, but it's something that I'm certainly, you know, I have smaller children, um, but the fact that my not-yet seven-year-old is like, when am I getting a phone? I'm like, never. Um, I know, exactly. Especially, um, you know, I feel like Jonathan Haidt has been everywhere recently, but I'm like in the middle of reading The Anxious Generation, and it is making me my own version of an anxious... of an anxious, I was already anxious, but now I'm extra anxious about something in particular. So, I hear you on that one, and I, I want us to get something in place for next school year. I'll put that stake in the ground. Okay, that was that one. Annie, thank you for, oh, she left. But I think those are all good requests. I know we've kind of asked for, like, hey, what's the, what's the list of all the FICMAT stuff? Where are we at? What's the, what's the project plan? I also wonder if, she brought up the auditors, right? And I know that often, public agencies have a policy of changing auditors every number, set number of years. I don't know if we have a policy for that, but that might be something to bring up as part of some of these findings. And then, da-da-da-da-da-da. To Arno, you know, thank you for pointing out that Texas aren't a choice, once they've been voted on. Voting is a choice, and I continue to want to support the bond. Harvard-Westlake tuition is $50,000 a year. So if my 50, even if it's $50,000 over the course of the bond, it's still money well-spent. All right? So that my child doesn't, as I've brought up the example every single time, have to take class in the library because the HVAC is out in her room. Room 6, Disney Elementary, get on it. So, she's not in that room anymore. But my son will be next year, so. I know, get after it. So, you know, I think it's, I think it's money well-spent, as long as we're monitoring, as long as I think the, the board takes a really active role in prioritizing what Perkins Eastman put together, and being really tight with that money and making sure that we're spending it on absolutely necessary things. And I, I believe in the ability of staff and the board to do that. Sadie and Autumn, thank you for coming forward with your support. Thank you for supporting your kids and being super brave. You know, I remember when I was probably their age, you know, my mom is fairly conservative, and she would never, she never would dislike someone, but I remember her saying, like, "Gosh, it just, it must be so much harder for those kids to go through the world." And the fact that your kiddos can go be exactly who they are, if, I, I hope, my vision is for it to be all day long. And it sounds like they're getting closer, but to know that they have that time to be their full selves, I'm, I'm really proud of them for making that for other kids, too. To the other Miller parents who came, like, I hear your frustration. You thought you would have more control, and you got surprised, and no one likes to be surprised. I hate surprises. You know, I think there's a place in here for making club announcements in school newsletters. I know we send out a school newsletter every week. Hey, here are when the clubs are meeting, if you want to tell your kids. You know, one of the parents brought up, like, how, and it was in one of the emails as well, like, how am I supposed to answer my, my child's questions when they ask about LGBTQ people, right? And I was just thinking about, like, my daughter asks lots, lots of questions, like, we call her Socrates, because she never stops asking questions. And so, you know, when we go into Los Angeles, and sometimes Burbank, but mostly when we go into LA, you know, we've had long conversations about when she sees unhoused people, why are they there? What's happening? What, what, you know, we, we have big conversations about it. And when one of her best friends in preschool had two dads, he had daddy and he had papa, you know, we had lots of conversations about how different families are, and whether or not there's a Rainbow Club, these students and their families are going to continue to exist. And I think this board is unified in, and, and staff, and the district is unified in continuing to recognize those families and support those families, which may mean that your child has questions. And how you answer those questions is up to you and your family, but we, you know, this is a club that was student-generated, and there's no parent veto for a club for other students. If you don't want your child to go, talk to your student about it. It's, that's being a parent, is having those uncomfortable conversations. And I, again, don't ask us to close something down that's important to those kids, because we won't. Yeah, that's all, yeah, thanks. Thank you.
So, I would start with LeAnn. I'm going to probably age myself, but when I worked for Majority Leader Daria Fromer back in 2002, I did work on AB 306, which was the language for Braille in college. So, that was my experience working with communities, you know, blind, deaf, and, and I understand, because we heard the stories that no one was talking about. Those of you who don't know, this was a bill to remind people that we should educate people more on Braille education in college level, which, because the education system wasn't even up to date. This is a long time ago, 2002, but it's still something, we hear it over and over again. So I understand your concerns, because I've worked with a lot of advocacy groups that were brought in, bringing forward similar concerns. So thank you for bringing it forward, and I'm certain we'll be addressing this as well. To Ms. Kristin, Christina Concedine, did I say it right?
Christina Concedine.
Thank you. I understand your concerns. Our son is doing, is in the Miller math, higher-up math level. So, so first of all, thank you for all you do, you know. I love all our teachers, but math teachers have a special place in my heart, so thank you for all you do. But I think also, we need to really also have a broader conversation about the importance of mathematics in today's, you know, global markets and what it is. And I'm seeing this movement backed into mathematics engineering, which is happening a lot now. And competition is pretty stiff out there. So better, more mathematics, you know, the better. But thank you for all you do, and I'm certain we'll figure this out as well. And then, Ms. Maslik, where are you? You know, I just love your smile and just true counselor. So thank you very much, and thank you for all you do. It was very, very heartwarming. To Sadie and Autumn, and, you know, some of the conversations we had here. Now, I always tell people, you know, sometimes you read about things, some people read about certain things, some people experience things, and sometimes, you know, through the experience, you start sharing commonalities, stories. And I would use myself as an example. When I came here at almost 18, I was made fun of. They called me phobester, you know, because I was new to this country. I was made fun of because of my last name. A lot of people still can't pronounce it properly, which is okay. I sometimes get it wrong. But also, it was very difficult, coming to a new country, not speaking the language, not understanding the culture, right? And I think, when I started to, and I'm again aging myself, my experience and, you know, coming from Europe as an immigrant, leaving my country at 14, witnessing horrible things, crimes against humanity, war, you name it. I think when I came here, what really started opening my eyes in terms of the LGBTQ, LGBTQI community was, one of my jobs I had, some of you know I DJ, was I used to promote clubs. I had to work four or five jobs to support my family, I'll do it on weekends. And these were during the, again, aging myself, 1990s, these were called Club Kids. They were all my friends. These are predominantly gay individuals who came from East Coast trying to find jobs. There's a great documentary on this, who ended up getting hooked on drugs, and a lot of them ended up committing suicide. Those were my friends. And I think through the experience, we found commonalities, being in a similar situation, right? Not knowing our place in this new country, or West Coast for some of them, new state. And it taught me a very precious lesson. I think sometimes people are scared. Sometimes people read certain things, but they haven't experienced it. And it goes both ways, by the way. I think some of these individuals who spoke today have been through probably difficult times. I know a lot of them are very well-educated, but they're made fun of because they have an accent. My own mother, you know? I've witnessed people making fun of her, former teacher. So I think what we have to learn overall is that at the end of the day, especially now with what we're facing as a community with the state budget, we have to come together. I think this is a great opportunity, actually, to bring our communities together. And what we call this beautiful mosaic called Burbank, you know, Burbank is not what it was 20, 30 years ago. Huh? No, I know. I read my history. And I think my colleague made a comment, you know, unless you're Native American, we're all immigrants to this country. And a lot of us have different stories, but at the same time, it's still difficult. Because even for my community, I have family right now, as we speak, being slaughtered because where they're from, their religion, whatever it is, right? It's difficult. So I think my hope is, and I have every, every, you know, I, I know my board is supportive, but I also have, you know, I know our Dr. Pramo, Pramo and staff, he understands, because he shared his story. And I think it's important for us to share our personal stories, to find those commonalities, before we jump to conclusions. And I think, I think to that practice that Mr. Pramo has so openly, I, you know, you shared a very, very personal story, and I think that's what's important. How do we bring others forward who might not know, or might be concerned, or be afraid, or heard something, or learned something on social media? I sometimes blame social media, all of a sudden everyone is an expert in their areas, right? How do we make sure that people understand that this is about humanity? Just like when I talk about the genocide and what's happening, it is not just about Armenians, it's a question of humanity. It's about treating each other equally, but also respecting our differences, but at the same time, celebrating the differences. And I hope that this experience will bring our communities even closer. I hear this all the time. I mean, you saw what happened in Glendale, and what's happening in Glendale, unfortunately. But I think sometimes people jump to the conclusion, trying to, you know, have this bright, broad stroke of, well, these are, who these individuals are, this is how they think, you know? I think we need to be more understanding. My community itself, being an Armenian-American immigrant, it's very complex. I am not a byproduct of genocide. My people were brought in 500 years ago, a slave from northern Iran to build the capital. So my story is very different than some of these individuals, or some Armenians who, you know, lived in a continent of Africa because they were forced because of the genocide. So I think understanding, having these communications will bring us to what I hope is the fact that, after all, we're all humans, and we want the best for our children. So I want to thank all of you on coming forward and talking about this. But I think we're in good hands. I know Dr. Pramo will be, you know, continue this conversation, and I want to thank my colleague for also, you know, mentioning that, again, we need to talk more about this and find our, you know, commonalities as human beings. Because, I'll say this again, and I'll, I'll repeat myself, I am very concerned about what's coming in terms of the budget and the education. This is the time, more than ever, our community has to come together. And I think, as our, our friend said from high school, this is the best investment. You know, the education. I think the numbers he brought forward were smart, but more than ever, we need to also invest in the education of our children. So with that, I want to thank all of you, you know, our teachers, our speakers, bringing this stuff forward. Thank you very much, and I look forward to, you know, what happens. And our son did go to Miller as well, so to make a long story short, loves Miller, too. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. To everybody, Ms. Matusik, is that how you pronounce it? Thank you. Echoing my colleagues, I look forward to getting a report back and figuring out ways to authentically address your concerns. One of the things that I briefly talked to Dr. Pramo about today is, we need to go back and look at our whole calendar that we have for the resolutions, and make sure that we are including as many groups as possible, so people feel seen, heard, and celebrated. So that's an oversight that we can absolutely correct, and I can give you my word that it'll be corrected for next year. Absolutely. I also don't believe, you know, something else I brought up to Dr. Pramo is, I don't think we have a resolution for Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, which is this month. And so, we're learning as we go a little bit, and it's really important for us that we have people who are willing to come forward and say, "Hey, this didn't happen," and it needs to, because our goal, and I think this is sort of the theme of the evening, is all of our students need to feel seen, heard, and celebrated, and this is a very small thing that we can do to make that happen. So thank you for that, and I look forward to reading the packet. I will read it, I give you my word. And then happy to follow up and talk, and just hope that you won't wait, you don't have to wait for a board meeting, continue to reach out to us however feels comfortable for you to do, and we'll continue the conversation. But thank you for spending time with us tonight and sharing what's been going on. Ms. Barnes, there's nothing I can say that hasn't been said. I mean, the situation completely sucks. Hard stop. I, I wish I had something more eloquent to say, I don't. You know, we, we all had that brief moment in time where we were like, "Okay, cuts are done." Like, we can, now we can just focus on rebuilding, and then it was like, "Oh, but no, wait a minute." And I think point, you know, the, the sad point is, as long as the, you know, California continues to balance its budget on the back of public education, this is what we're going to continue to face time and again. And so, you know, our advocacy, parent and teacher advocacy with our legislators is just as important as everything else that we're doing, because change, I mean, we can talk about it at the end of time, but changes need to be made because this is not a sustainable model. So, again, like, does that help anything? No. But I do want you to know that, like, I hear you, and that it is unbelievably difficult, and that we'll continue to adjust and, and alter, and hopefully, hopefully we can find ways to improve, but I hope you'll come back, I know that you will, and continue to let us know, or shoot us an email so that we can respond as things come up. Similarly, Ms. Concedine, thank you so much. I'm going to rely on the Superman of scheduling over there. Maybe I'll just sit in the room and watch you two, like, go back and forth, so I can learn the grasshopper. Excuse me, that was gross. But, we, the challenges are seemingly insurmountable. We will overcome them, but at what cost, right? And so, just finding ways to address it. I appreciate Dr. Pramo's stance on if we need more FTE, we will get it. I believe it, and I know that we will figure out a way. So, but I do, it's really important to keep, to keep hearing from people, here's what's on my mind, here's what I'm worried about, and not just in the sort of larger, but the specifics of it are really important. So please, please keep them coming. Please hold, please hold, please hold. Ms. Markarian, I, I want to encourage you, so I appreciate you coming, but, and the things that you asked for, I think I'm sort of happy to note that those are things that are happening. Mr. Cantwell and his entire team are hyper-focused on regular monitoring, training, making real-time adjustments, letting us know the timeline in which those things are going to happen. It is a huge task to overhaul systems that have not been working for seemingly decades. And so, I know it, it can be sort of politically advantageous to come and say, "Here's what's wrong," but I do think what's nice to know, and I wish you had stuck around to hear this, is that those concerns are being met, and I think expertly so, by our, by our team in a way that makes me feel very confident. I think Ms. Ponser Campker's suggestion that she brought up is a great one. I think Ms. Ponsor Campker's suggestion that she brought up is a great one. I'm very happy to have somebody who has so much expertise in this area on the board to help guide us. It's really important because that's not my strong suit. But it makes me happy to know that your concerns, I think, are being very expertly addressed. And I think if you go back and watch previous meetings, you can hear some of the conversations, some really robust conversation about the ways in which Mr. Cantwell and his team are going to be addressing those concerns. And I look forward to this sort of continued updates and reports back on the work that's being done. Let's see. Arno, thanks for coming. Always great to hear from you. Couldn't agree more with your, talking about your investment in education because it all pays off in dividends in the end. I want to focus most of my comments. I'm probably not going to be as generous as my colleagues in regards to some of the people that came to speak tonight. And maybe that's because I teach in middle school and so I sort of see every day the sort of struggle of all of these young amazing people to sort of find who they are and celebrate themselves. And it's already so difficult to do that in elementary, middle, and high school. And so, you know, somebody, I made a comment here, somebody said, what, you know, like, what happens in Rainbow Club? And it's like, what happens is there's a safe space where they're not being bullied. And so what I hope the conversation becomes with many of these families is the conversation around not bullying people for being different. A conversation for not letting fear drive you to violence or hurtful language or hurtful actions. And that just because you don't understand something doesn't mean it's wrong or bad. You just don't understand it yet. So that assumption of best intentions, right? Nothing was kept secret. The club's been going since November. Kids get together and meet with some phenomenal staff that give up their lunch to hang out with these amazing kids and give them a chance to be silly and goofy and make buttons and I want a button. And just feel like they are safe and loved and supported. And I really appreciated Mr. Ferguson, stop with the attacking our staff. Somebody talked about the flyers keep coming up. And I want to talk about that for a minute. The flyers keep coming up because people keep ripping them down. And that includes parents at open house and students. And I can guarantee you that if the staff that keeps putting them up, including our librarian, need help, I'm sure every one of us in here will show up and put those flyers back up every damn day, the second they get taken down. Period. Because that's not how you handle difference. And that's not how you handle disagreement. And to Ms. Ponsor Campker's point, if you don't want your child to attend Rainbow Club, there's a very easy way to not. Don't. It's, it's at lunchtime. But there, I don't recall, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that there were parent complaints for, for the astronomy club or parent complaints for the podcasting club because they weren't informed in advance about those things. Okay, so if those things aren't a concern, I'm trying to be generous. I understand that people are perhaps working from a place of fear, but it is 2024 and we are not going to govern from a place of fear, nor are we going to respond from a place of fear. This is a small group of people who are choosing ignorance over acceptance. And there is a large community at Miller that celebrates acceptance, that celebrates Rainbow Club, that is excited that we're expanding and supporting our students and celebrating them and lifting them up. And that's the majority. And to Dr. Pramo's point, I don't feel in the world of public education or private education for that matter, we have to bend the knee to people who are afraid anymore. I am not going to wait around for everybody to get on board. Because if getting on board means supporting all our kids, then you can just like run after that train of awesome and catch up when you feel like it. But I'm not slowing it down for you. I'm not slowing it down for anybody. Because the single most important thing is a safe, supportive place for our kids to learn, grow, and flourish. And if that is not a priority for you, too bad. So come on back. I don't think anybody up here is going to change their opinion. I don't think a single staff member in our district office or in our schools is going to waver even a little bit. So if you want to have an honest conversation, okay, I'm always open to that.
No, you're not.
For most people. I'm always open for that. But what I'm not open to is adults coming into a space and trying to make small children feel smaller or make parents feel afraid. We were all elected to do our best by our kids. And I fully expect there will be plenty of people who will run against me, Mr. Ferguson, and Dr. Aga Konian in November. Bring it. Because if I don't win again, then I'll go back to my classroom where I already am and I'll keep fighting that fight in my room. And I'll keep fighting that fight alongside my friends and colleagues for as long as I can. So yes, the power of the vote is yours, but right now, it's ours. Moving on.
May I suggest also people have more cookies, you know?
Thanks, thanks, Armon.
Be happy, thank you.
Thanks, Armon, that was helpful. Okay. Now, I'm really excited about this next thing. I am actually, I'm really excited about this report. So we're moving on to 11A. Fiscal Service Department update. I am actually like legitimately pumped about this. Have a great night, Mr. Schlossman. Mr. Cantwell, welcome. Excited to hear and see the amazing work that your team has been doing. Turn it over to you.
President Weisberg, board members, Superintendent Pramo, colleagues, and community. It's my pleasure this evening to actually have a very small role to quickly turn the podium over to Dr. Abdelhamid. Just want to set the stage a little bit. Obviously, you at the DIAS know what we've gone through over the past year, but I want to make sure the community understands some of the larger context to our fiscal department.
Dr. Aga Konian.
Yes.
The historic staffing level in our business office was 15.5 FTE. That's full-time equivalent, meaning again, 15 full-time positions, one half-time. In the past year, we went as low as six full-time equivalent CSEA positions with one supervisor in the department. So we, when we say we've been understaffed, that is an understatement. We have been well below 50% staffing and that has been the case pre-COVID was the last time that we were fully staffed. So for the past four years, this team has been operating, again, filling, filling many hats. In addition to that, we've had a massive turnover of staff over the past three years and particularly really coming to a head over the past 12 months. And so I want to say thank you to Lisa Sahigan and Gina Segura. Those are the only two employees in the entire department who have more than 13 months of tenure in our district. So again, not only have we had understaffing, but it has been really, again, a complete turnover of staff. And so you can imagine, you know, when we had staff who'd been here for 15, 20-plus years, they had their systems that worked really well for them. They created them 15, 20 years ago. When they departed, we did not have desk manuals, we did not have standard operating procedures, we did not have systems in place that necessarily documented the way those things were done. And we lost that institutional knowledge. And so it's been a real challenge. And again, this team has really risen to the occasion. And so again, with no further ado, I want to introduce our incredible fiscal director who's going to walk you through just the beginning of the implementation that she's been able to accomplish. She started with us January 3rd. I know the date well because it was June 13th when we last had a fiscal director that was in the department. And so again, about seven months without, she came in. My expectations for her for the first year have been exceeded in the first three months. And so it is exciting to see what the next nine will hold as far as hitting that year mark. And so again, I want to turn it over to our fiscal director, who again, I want to point out, happens to also be a former teacher, one of the very few in LA County, who, a fiscal director that actually has classroom experience, but that's the lens that she takes to our budget meetings. So Dr. Abdelhamid, with no further ado.
I feel like the room cleared out.
I think that was my fault.
And I'm not.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Sorry. All right, thank you. And, oh, is, oh. Can we get the PowerPoint?
There we go.
Okay, there we go. Okay, it's disappeared from the screen. Welcome. Okay, perfect. Good evening, everybody. Good evening. Just wanted to introduce myself and then go over a few updates to our department. I've only been here a few months, but we have made a few changes. We've had new staff. And so just really looking forward to more changes to come. I know change is hard for a lot of people and so I do want to recognize that and just say that our team has been really good with just adapting and moving forward. The people that have been there a really long time have just really stuck it out and given a lot of institutional knowledge. So I appreciate all of our staff. So I'm going to start with a few, oh, there we go. We're going to start with just a few level, few high-level findings from the FICMAT report. Andy kind of covered a few of them. I know there's a very long list, but this is just at the broad stroke kind of level. So something that was brought up was that we had a lack of internal controls and integrated systems. And so what that really means in kind of reality is that we have a system that we use for payment processing, a system that we use for budgeting, which is with LA County, so we have to use that. We have a system where we have our HR data. And so all of these different systems, which I would say there's probably seven or eight, and some of them have similar data, some of them don't, they're just not integrated. They don't talk to each other. And so it's really hard to pull information just very quickly for folks. Lack of internal controls, we've seen that just with audit findings. And so that's been a pretty big thing with FICMAT. Budget errors due to manual processes. And so even with spreadsheets that we've had, just something that I noticed coming in was that even with the systems we've had, things have been very manual. And so even if you find a spreadsheet within it, you'll see a formula that has manual numbers. And so it doesn't reference anything. And so if you've ever been in spreadsheets, if it doesn't reference anything and it has 14 numbers in a row that are added together, you have no idea what that's referring to. And so to look at historical data hasn't always been, or historical files hasn't always been the best experience for us. Lack of digital, sorry, was it?
He asked, she was laughing there saying it was a nervous response. It's just like, yeah, nightmare fuel, like, oh, look at all these fixed numbers.
Yeah, exactly.
And no one knows where they're coming from. Great, awesome.
Lack of digital formulaic and documented processes. I mean, Andy kind of covered this, but walking in, there really wasn't any sort of manuals. A lot of things have just been done in a very paper-esque manner. And so I think just moving out of that paper process and just moving into things that are more digital, that's something that we've really kind of covered the last few months. And then just generally high turnover and vacancies in key positions. Again, Andy highlighted this, but most of our staff has only been there a couple of months. And so I think generally there's a learning curve, but I think it's even harder when people have been in a position so long, they kind of kept things to themselves because they knew that information and then they, you know, leave, there isn't cross-training, there isn't anything of that sort. And so that's just been a very kind of problematic experience for us. So again, high-level updates and happy to do this kind of every few months to just see as we're progressing if that would be helpful for folks. But high-level updates of what we've kind of accomplished thus far. And I think this is might, might be out of order, but let me click through it. But yeah, because I didn't see the first one. But changes to budget monitoring. And so again, if we have different systems, they have different data, it's really hard to tell a principal, an office manager, a director, this is how much you have currently. And so what we've established, and I'll show a screenshot later on, is really being able to pull several data sets every day. And it's just a quick task every morning, that's kind of going to be our routine now. Those data sets then feed into an Excel model that is shared out to every director, every principal. And so every day they can log in and see, this is my live budget. And so it's not a system, it's a spreadsheet, but it's a spreadsheet that updates daily. And I'm someone that trusts in spreadsheets to the T, so we're going to make it work. Updates to our accounts payable processes. So two kind of big facets here is that we work with our purchasing team and we've realized there were a lot of bottlenecks with how we were communicating. We were getting one-off emails saying, this one payment is ready to pay. And in a district where we're paying, I mean, close to 150 payments a day, that's been the trend recently. That's just not manageable. So we were seeing a lot of bottlenecks. And so we've met with our purchasing team a number of times and just collaborated on some updated processes. With our departments, we've set up essentially digital boxes where they can enter information instead of sending a one-off invoice and then asking about it a week later. They can almost send it to a folder that says, ready to be paid. Once we've paid it, we've moved it out. And so a department can go in and check, oh, it's moved out. I know that it's been paid. They don't have to then follow up and wait for a response and it just becomes a cycle. Updates to our accounts receivable processes. The biggest piece here was that in the past, we were doing it in a duplicative manner. And so data was being entered twice in two different systems. And so one of our former budget techs, who's now a financial analyst with us, she created an Excel macro that essentially takes data from one spreadsheet and then automatically feeds it into a upload file. And so we only have to enter it once. And so small things, but big wins on our side. Team building and process documents. So we did have a two-day retreat at LA Valley College. And that really just helped us ground on what does our budget calendar look like? What are the process documents that we need? The second day, we started to get into writing some of those. I do think we need probably another day or two in the summer to really flesh that out. But we have a good thorough list of the things that we at least need to start documenting. And then we just have a few other upcoming changes, which I'll highlight in this presentation. So cha, and I don't know why it's all indifferent. Yeah. Changes to budget monitoring again. So we're pulling, essentially this is something that's new for us, but we're pulling two reports every day. One from Smarty, which is our payment processing system, one from Best. And so it's really going to show actual expenses that have hit with even personnel names so that they can see, okay, this person has gotten this much for hourly overtime or things of that sort. And then encumbrances, so things that haven't hit but are likely going to because they've been encumbered for something from Smarty. And so this will again enable schools to see a live budget. We haven't fully rolled it out yet, but we did meet with the Burrows principal maybe two days ago and we kind of gave him a preview. And he said, you know, this would be great, maybe we can add this. And so I think it can be a very live, dynamic document. We're on different tabs of that document. We can have helpful links. We can put, if there's process documents for their staff, we can place them there just so that there's that collaboration between us. Another thing for budget monitoring, which this happened at the last board meeting, but you all approved us to get a small contract with a company for an online PTR process. And so that is a very paper-esque process right now. And so that is a big win for us. My first kind of few weeks in the district, I met with each of our staff members and that was the first thing they said, you know, if you can do one thing in the first six months, can you get rid of this paper process? So that's a big win for us just in terms of manual entry and just making sure that we have a tighter look on position control. Because all things related to positions that change over the years come through these personnel transaction requests. And then something another one of our staff members has created is a sub-request monitoring sheet. And so this is something that office managers use. But this allows for them to see a very accurate account string because we were seeing that office managers may be entering an account string incorrectly. And it's not always, you know, on them to know exactly which string to use. And so that's just a way for us to communicate with them and to change account strings for them before they enter their time in our payroll system. And so these are just some screenshots. So again, it looks very small, but each, each column pulls from a different data set. And once we have a kind of a better view of it, we can definitely disperse out if folks want to see it or give feedback. I'm someone that's very pro-change, so even if I'm implementing the change, if someone has a better idea, I would love to hear it. This is another screenshot. So we, with our purchasing team, we realized, okay, instead of every day we're getting 20, 30 emails saying, this is ready to pay, let's create one tracker that we both have access to. And so at any given time, we might have six different people in this one file. And so they're indicating this PO is ready to pay. And then we're indicating, okay, my staff member, Rose, is now going to be assigned to this and she's paid it. And so our staff members can go in every day, see, there's seven in there that say, ready, no one's assigned to it. Let me assign myself and let me pay that right now. Because before it was one. Because before, it was one person, one email, and so it became a bottleneck of dispersing the work. So this just allows for us to disperse the work in a more timely manner. And then this is related to our AP process for departments. Again, I was referencing when a department has an invoice for us, they used to email it. Again, huge bottleneck. So now they have their own folders, they're putting it in, ready to be paid. Our staff are paying it, putting it in completed. So anyone who's submitting an invoice can then go into these folders and see, oh, it was moved, that means it was paid. And so they don't have to constantly follow up. And I don't know why that happened. Some of our AR processes, so accounts receivable, so we did create a very similar kind of live spreadsheet. This is what I was saying, in the past, we were entering data twice, and so it just really didn't make sense from an efficiency or kind of error perspective, because if you're manually entering it twice, it's just another chance that you could enter something incorrectly. And so this creates an automated journal, which is through that Excel macro, and it's also shared access. And so it used to be, you know, one person would have to enter everything because the file was locked, and, you know, only one person can enter things at a time. And so this just allows for multiple people to be entering kind of our checks and our cash logs in at the same time. And so I think the next few slides have kind of an image of, we're entering all of our deposits on one sheet, so this is what it looks like. And so then through formulas, it creates a journal number, and so then that feeds into this macro, which populates the account string and a whole bunch of other things that are needed for the actual upload. And so then it gets uploaded through that other file, which then looks like this in Smarty. So in the past, our staff were having to enter this and then having to also enter this manually into Smarty. And so that just created a one-step solution instead of two. So some other things related to team building and process documents. We've fully kind of merged into using OneDrive, which may not seem like a big deal to folks, but it was a, it was a hard struggle, just even to get IT involved. And so the problem with not using something like OneDrive was that things were very siloed. And so if a budget tech was over, the entire general fund, they had access to that data set and that spreadsheet, but they were the only ones making changes. If I open it, it's a read-only, there wasn't that dynamic kind of ability. And so this allows for people to be in documents at the same time, people to access data in the same ways. And so we have been documenting some of our processes. Something that I didn't indicate here is that my predecessors didn't have as many, I guess, meetings, which has been new for our team. And so we meet, you know, once, twice a week, and if something comes up where someone says, you know, I don't know how to do that, it's immediately, okay, let's host another session and do a cross-training. There should be no reason that people can't do the same functions, you have the same job title. And then some team redesign. And just to clarify, redesign meaning no additional positions, just restructuring what we have. So something today, for instance, we have accounting analyst position. So we're taking our project accounting position, which was bond-related, and we're making it broader, and it actually, I guess, costs less, but it's an accounting analyst position, so it's broader, and then that way we can bring someone in that isn't so specific to bond-related matters. Financial analysts, so we've had two of our budget techs actually move into financial analyst roles. So that's just helping with our pipeline of talent and just really kind of creating that stream, so someone could come in as a budget and accounting tech, move their way up into a financial analyst, and then, you know, keep working their way up, and so they can see that ladder. And then we've just been doing a lot of cross-training, particularly on the accounting side. Most of our budget and accounting techs lived in a very budget-esque world before, and it was very kind of in the weeds, and sometimes that meant they missed the big picture. And so we're doing a lot of cross-training, and so just a lot of things that are coming up with cross-training. And then some other upcoming changes. So something our current staff have typically done is that, you know, one staff member will say, I'm over general fund, I'm over LCAP, I'm over special ed. And so that, that creates almost a bubble or a silo of information. So if everyone doesn't have a small piece of it, then when someone leaves, it becomes, the knowledge is gone. And so what we're doing is actually having staff be location-based in terms of their assignment. So if I'm, if my assignment is Miller, then I can see there's, I'm familiar with their special ed funding, with their LCAP funding, with their general fund funding, so that if someone leaves, then I understand, oh, I've done elementary, I know what this means, so I can pick up another assignment, and it just, it doesn't have as much of a learning curve. And then something else we're doing, hopefully later this summer, is almost doing a office manager slash principal training. And so we're hoping to kind of roll out this live view of the budget, but then also just train folks on the online PTR, entering time, different things that have come up as they end up being issues on our end of having to fix things. And so that's something that we have coming up. And then just generally reducing paper and manual processes. With our purchasing team, we did a recent collab to identify the 100 most-used vendors. And so we sent, because everyone receives checks currently, which again, very paper-esque. And so we sent a response to all of them with the form for them to receive ACH, because again, when we say they receive checks, those checks come to us every day, and that means they get stuffed in an envelope. And so it's a, it's a whole process, but so we've requested those 100 get on ACH, and then we're hoping to do the same for the rest. We just wanted to tackle the big ones first. And we base that off of volume of transactions. Yeah. Trust me, you should come see. Yeah. Yeah. And they each have to get approved in best, which I have to do tonight, but. No, and then creating some online forms, so we've realized that when schools send us a cash collection form, it's a paper form, they've written on it, I mean, it's, there's chicken scratch. So even just creating some online forms, even if it's a Google form, where they're creating that, submitting it to us, we have an electronic record, and then when they send us the cash, which hopefully we'll get away from eventually, but when they send cash, we at least have that electronic record of it. So all of that data is now with us electronically, we don't have to retype it. And so just little things like that, just capturing efficiencies where we can. I know that was probably a word vomit, but. But yes, I'm again, very open to new changes and upcoming changes, but. I think, yeah, so questions, thoughts?
Please don't ever leave.
Was it?
Please don't ever leave us.
But the good thing is, is she is setting it up so she can leave us.
Because you're only as good as what you leave behind.
But don't. I had one question, and then I'm going to pop over to you, because I know you have more than one. No, I don't mean that pejoratively. I love that you have these questions. So I'm super happy, I'm looking at the upcoming changes, training for office managers and principals, which I think is obviously beyond important. Are we going to have any kind of like manual for them, so if questions come up as they're learning these new products? Because we're talking about some office managers that have been doing it one way for decades and decades. And so do they, I assume one of the benefits of having one person working at each site is that then you have your contact person.
Yeah.
But also, will they have something to work from in case they're trying to troubleshoot on their own?
Yeah, and I think we can, I can look to see what our process doc list looks like right now, but we would 100%, if we were giving a training to them late, late summer, we would be giving out process documents. I think we would probably do it electronically, realistically, in that same spreadsheet, so that even if they left, the next person then has all the information. Yeah, no problem.
I'm so excited. This is fantastic. And, you know. I was reflecting that like, in organizations I've been in, it's like after someone leaves, and then you like get their giant pile of stuff, and you're like, well, that was Bob's system, and Bob didn't take very good notes, and Bob did a lot of, you know, hardcoded formula, like hardcoded numbers, and Bob is now the bane of my existence, right? And so I think the fact that you're doing your best to kind of like depersonalize the work, and I don't mean that in a bad way, I mean it in like a way that like is not so reliant on like someone's idiosyncrasies of how they get their work done, right? And so I think that's super important, that we won't have to blame Bob forever. Whoever the Bob is in this case. So. My question wa- I have a couple of questions, but I have like a couple of like annoying things that I'll just email you about later.
I've got an idea for you. I want consolidated inboxes.
Yeah, exactly. So you mentioned that you're generalizing this accountant position. Should we pass a bond? Would we get another accountant that would be bond-specific? Got it. Helpful. And. I'm, I'm really excited about the idea that you are, that you've switched kind of the allocation for the financial analysts, instead of it being like based on revenue source to be based on cost center, right? And so remind me kind of how many people those are and kind of how you've divvied up that work.
Yeah, and we, we've, we changed how we thought we were going to divvy it. So we have four budget and accounting tech positions right now and three financial analysts, and we're interviewing for another budget and accounting tech that we've just had vacant tomorrow. But let's say across those five, we were almost thinking that all of the, all locations would get dispersed across the five, and the financial analysts would also get those same locations, but at a broader macro view. And so any reporting would, would be the financial analyst responsibility. But anything like a budget transfer or something more clerical in nature would be a budget and accounting tech role. And so across five people, they would have all locations, but those three would also have those locations, but at a more macro view. So then when things are coming up in terms of budget development, it's not just one person that oversees that location, it's almost a tag team between a financial analyst, who's someone who's more senior, and a budget and accounting tech.
And then just kind of a broader question, which is like, you know, we've got the kind of high-level FICMAT findings, and then kind of what the upcoming changes are, like what are the, what's the next big rock to tackle here in terms of the findings? You guys are all laughing, why are you laughing?
Just because we're in the midst of.
How many more checks are there to write, guys?
No, I think, I think our focus right now is really heavily on budget development, cleaning up position control, just getting people in the same room to make sure that the data that we're walking into the next year with, July 1, is synced up. And so to me, that's really the next big thing. And then from there, it's tackling some of those other smaller processes that needed to have been changed, but right now, they're not the big fish to fry. Right now, I think position control would be the biggest thing. If we're sitting in a room with a principal, Peter, Sarah, our team, all four of us should have the same exact view on the positions. And so that's probably, probably the biggest thing, I think, would be.
And so when does that get implemented, and where are we in that process?
I would, I would love to respond to that. I really would, because it was absolutely amazing today. I wish you could have been there, late in the afternoon, probably 1:32-ish. In the business office in their conference room, sat Oscar Macias and Peter Knopik and our assistant supervisor, Sarah, the business people, myself, Andy, and all we were doing is going through every single school and their staffing, and who's there and who's not there, and who's leaving and who's not leaving, and who's replacing here, and going over and doing that which is position control. And I know you guys understand this, but I really want the community to understand this. When we're talking about position control, that is a function of HR. That business is working and getting the team together and forming that so that we can be all on the same page, because we're all interdependent. So when you think about position control, that's HR's function, but it affects instructional services and what we're doing and how we're allocating FTE. Obviously, it affects budget and finance. So we are starting to initiate the process of bringing every single person together at the table to go over it all at the same time. It could be better when we automate, but at the moment, this is what we're doing to make sure that we are doing it right and getting it right.
And we have several more meetings like that. We're meeting with principals next week and just.
So, you know, I do get excited, just like my colleague does here. So I kind of went to his experience when I became the director, because our accountant left, and I, Bob didn't leave all the information, so it was a nightmare. I'm very surprised we're still stuffing checks, ACH. So how quickly, that's one of my concerns. Is it because employees are not willing to receive direct?
No, I think part of it is because Best requires documentation that just hasn't always been, people have not been notified that they can do that. And so right now, we sent something out en masse to the first 100. And so I think, and I can go back to talk to, like, we have a new director of purchasing, so I can, I don't want to say push that on him, but to kind of say, well, we did it the first time together, now you all can do that and just work through the entire list. That's not something I have to necessarily be as involved with anymore. But it is something that our team enters into Best, and it is unfortunately a one-by-one situation. And so just based on the sheer number of vendors we have, I think I can tell him, let's focus on the next 100 and almost just do it in batches. I think we have a lot of just one-off vendors, a lot of people that get reimbursements. Again, we're processing 150 approximately checks a day. They're coming into our, into the district office. Some people will email us and say, can you hold my check? I want to come pick it up. And so even just nuances like that, just create timing issues for us and just things to monitor. And so, yeah, I'm, I'm with you. I mean, I want everyone to be on ACH.
And I appreciate that, because it is the highest volume. One of the learning curves I had to overcome in terms of checks and balances, especially dealing with a nonprofit or a, so it was the APR PO, we call it P O D A. So when it comes to that, we have a, we have a very rigorous process. What is our process here? Because in the past, there'd be, you know, purchase orders, who signs it, what's the final call, who monitors that as well? And that goes back, I'll show my, with my concerns about the, as great as Google Drive and OneDrive is also, who monitors that in terms of accessibility? Because, because I've had instances where people have hacked into, or an employee will give out a password. That's been one of the questions that always comes up when you're changing systems in terms of who. And that's also about vendors, procurement, I mean, how do we determine who these vendors are, who gets the W9s, you know, those kind of questions? I'm just curious if it's integrated into the system or if we're still doing it in silos too.
I think it's primarily, well, our purchasing team at least puts all the W9 information in Smarty, so that's one of the systems. But to that point, the ACH info lives in another system, which is Best. And so until we're fully in Best, which wouldn't be for another at least two years realistically, they will live in different systems, but I think from our perspective, we have access to both. And so I think checks and balances-wise, we have, purchasing is really over W9s and anything of that sort, and we're more so over actual payment processing.
But who monitors a purchase order, and then what's the next? Who signs it saying, okay, this can now become distributed?
That would be our director of purchasing, and then they're sending us a flag, this is ready to pay. I don't know if you want to add.
Yeah, so I mean, a PO is going to originate often at the site of the department level, and so there's going to be a department or site approval. Depending on the workflow, it may then go to me or to another assistant superintendent, some of the district office. And so there's the kind of. Department side, or again, the operational side of the payment, and then once it actually gets over into purchasing, we have three purchasing staff members who are the ones actually responsible for then getting that into the system.
And do we have a amount that at one point that it says, okay, this requires a certain, at this level, we have to get a certain manager's approval when it comes to purchases, you know, or not? Is it automatically just?
Yeah, the system is set up to trigger that. I don't know the caps for individual, yeah.
We do have caps on it.
And then on the payment side, so again, once we actually, so that's setting up the purchase order, but once the payment actually comes, the, you know, invoice comes due for payment, that's no longer the purchasing side, that's the AP side, the accounts payable side. Within payables, the person who inputs the payment is not the same person who can actually approve the issuance of the check. So that's what Dr. Del Hamid was saying, is that she'll be the one going, hopefully not tonight, tomorrow, to approve what her team actually put in. So no one is able to create a vendor and then create a payment for that vendor, much less than actually authorize the payment of that to, for that 750 check batch to come in. I'm a big fan of the Office, and there's a line in the show one time where they say that we have limitless paper in a paperless world. And that is the case for Burbank, if I, we have had limitless paper in our processes. And so again, it might seem like a small and again, almost laughable thing, but when we are talking about 750 checks, think about the postage. I mean, the postage alone is something that, as we can save that, plus then the manual labor of stuffing and the process of then holding on to those checks. I mean, those are things that, you know, Miriam said, they're small wins. I mean, they, those small wins add together, actually will have an impact on workload as well as on non-personnel-related costs.
And do we, is every, the vendors, do we send them checks, or do we also do direct payments? And, and do we, uh, is every, of the vendors, do we send them checks or do we also do direct payments, uh, if necessary, directly into their account? Or vice versa from them to us? Or is it all done through checks?
Right now, it's all checks.
Are you serious?
Other than the subset of people that have figured out we can do ACH. And then now we're trickling in, a bunch of vendors have said, oh, please take my card information, send it to me electronically, so.
And then also vice versa. Do we have a, does the district have credit cards or is it all direct?
We have cra- you mean if we're receiving money?
Yes.
So I, it, it varies, but there were, to that point, um, we met with our child development team and they use a system called Elio. And so it might be good at some point to look into, what does it look like to get a district license for that? So that any payments can come through that one system. So if a, if a parent is making a donation, it's coming through the same system that they're, they're paying for their ATB costs.
So is it, is it an integrated database plus processing like Blumarang or, you know, Blackbaud or? And is there, and is, what is the percentage of the charge for processing?
Yeah, so I think right now it's a 3% charge, but that's just with child development. So I think if we have a, we've already started the conversation with them, but I think we could almost bring that down if we say we're broadening this to include our entire district. So I think that's just a negotiation piece that our director of purchasing would have to embark on.
Any other questions? Oh, Dr. Prama.
We've, uh, done a lot of work in a very short amount of time. And we are cleaning up and advancing our systems that have been antiquated for a very, very long time. And I think that because it's been a topic that has come up several times over the course of the last several months. Uh, I feel very strongly that we have amazing leadership in the finance department. And I have every confidence in them, uh, and I want the community to know that. Uh, because I am not worried or afraid of us being able to handle a bond. Uh, I know that there were weak, valid reasons to question our processes, but I think that we are in excellent shape. And, uh, I stand by the people that work in that department and, uh, I know they're gonna do amazing job and they're not gonna let anybody down.
Thank you both so much. Well done. Um, we have already done 12A and 12B. Moving on to unfinished business, new and/or unfinished business. We've already done 13A and 13B. We are gonna move on to 13C. Huzzah! It's here so soon. Adoption of Resolution 32, recognizing 100 years of service by the Burbank Unified School District Parent Teacher Association. Mr. Ferguson may have a motion and a second.
Second.
Seconded by ur buddy, but let's give it to Ms. Tabit.
Thank you very much.
There's definitely no need for discussion on this. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No opposition. Motion carries jubilantly 5-0.
That's a great word.
It's a great word because it has a J in it.
And a great event, by the way. Thank you for the invitation. That was wonderful.
Uh, I believe Mr. Ferguson, you will be reading it.
Resolution 32, recognizing 100 years of service by the Burbank Unified School District Parent Teacher Association, PTA. Whereas, uh, the Parent Teacher Association was organized in May of 1924 to advocate for all children and youth in the Burbank Unified School District. And whereas Parent Teacher Association provides, uh, support, training, leadership and guidance for more than 16 local PTAs working with schools for the education, health and welfare of all children. And whereas the Burbank Unified School District is celebrating the PTA's mission to make every child's potential a reality by engaging and empowering families and communities to advocate for all children. And whereas the Burbank Unified School District facilitates and supports PTA in the development of equitable parent leadership. And voice that meaningfully contributes to the district and school governance and the academic growth of all students. And whereas there are more than 10,000 PTA members in Burbank PTAs donating many thousands of hours to our schools and communities. And whereas since 1924, the PTA has reminded our community of its obligations to our children. And to provide resources and important information to parents and educators. Whenever the education, health, safety or wellbeing of young people are vulnerable. PTA members are in the forefront of working to resolve those challenges. And whereas the Burbank Unified School District is committed to recognizing and honoring the PTA that is dedicated to the best of ideals of public service. And the Burbank PTAs are such, uh, are such worthy organizations. Now therefore be resolved that the Burbank Unified School District Board of Education unanimously commemorates the 100th anniversary of the Burbank Unified School District Parent Teacher Association for its outstanding service, leadership and commitment to the students, staff, families and the community of Burbank. Pass and approved?
Excellent. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you to our phenomenal PTA. And anyone wishing to celebrate them, be a good time to buy a membership. Come on up.
Come on up.
To PTA Council so you can become a member of all the PTAs.
And get a free Baskin Robbins coat.
Our fabulous PTA Council President.
You, Charlene Walter.
No, I know her name, Charlene Walter. I was waiting till she was like, I know who that is.
Oh, I didn't finish. I was excited.
We would love to have you say a few words.
Well, thank you so much for having us here. We really do appreciate you recognizing our 100 years of service to Burbank. I'm a little tired, but, uh, I, I, I do appreciate being here because I think that, uh, our volunteers need to be acknowledged right now. Last week was, um, a volunteer appreciation and without them, our work would not get done. So I just wanna acknowledge everyone for all that they do for our schools. We appreciate it. And we also are acknowledging what we have coming up next year. It's not gonna be easy and it's gonna take us working with all of you to make sure that joy is still important to our kids. And that's gonna be family engagement, something that's very important to us. Advocacy is very important to us. We have to advocate to change the way money is brought down to our city. Yes. So that's our plan for next year, joy and advocacy. And we are so excited to work with you all in doing that for our kiddos in Burbank. Thank you so much for having us.
Thank you. I love joy and advocacy.
And see you all at convention, y'all. We'll be there tomorrow.
Can I, uh?
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I know it's been a long night, but again, I, I thank you for all you do, but also, you know, thank you to be so open to all the families, you know, people just love being part of the PTA. And, you know, for being out there and being the voice, not only for the parents, but for, also for our kiddos. Uh, but again, and thank you for remembering the volunteers. People sometimes forget, but, but I'm also so glad that we brought back the event, right? Because of pandemic, we didn't have that celebration. Congratulations on your 100-year celebration.
Thank you so much. Oh, thank you.
We just appreciate you so much.
Yeah, and thank you for the welcome for everyone. We enjoyed doing it and we're happy to do it again.
Can't wait. Can't wait. What? Okay, moving on to 13D, adoption of Resolution 36, implementing certificated layoffs. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Aga Khanian, seconded by Mr. Ferguson. Any discussion?
Sucks.
It's horrible. And just for anybody listening or watching tomorrow, no discussion does not mean that this, these issues have not been discussed by us with the superintendent or with anybody else. These, this vote comes after many, many conversations, deliberations. This is not a vote we take lightly, but I don't want people to think just because there's no discussion now. It, that does not mean there hasn't been enormous amounts of discussion preceding this vote. Um, all board members in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries 5-0. As presented. 13E has been pulled. Moving on to 13F, approval of variable waiver requests, certificated staff may have a motion and a second. Moved by Ms. Ponsor Kamkar, seconded by Dr. Aga Khanian. I just went crazy. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Seeing no opposition, motion carries 5-0. 13G, approval of memorandum of understanding between Burbank Adult School and LA Regional Adult Education Consortium and the English Learner's Healthcare Pathways Grant Award may have a motion and a second.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Ferguson, seconded by Clerk Ponsor Kamkar. Any discussion?
I just thought this was very cool.
It is very cool.
And I was really excited about it.
Everything's cool at adult school.
I mean, like, yeah, what isn't cool at adult school? Literally everything. Their sweatshirts, the principal, their Instagram. Ugh, I wanna be adult school when I grow up. Okay, um, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Seeing no opposition, motion carries 5-0. Uh, acceptance of gifts. May I have a motion and a second?
Charlene, Charlene. Go ahead, Charlene.
She takes the stage for a minute.
Yeah, just for my moment. In light of next year's and years following that, budget crises. Our donations are more valuable and more appreciated.
Yeah, that's right.
And needed now more than ever. So with great appreciation, I ask that the board president, uh, take formal action and accept in the following gifts to the district. And that you can convey that thoughtful feeling of appreciation to all of our donors.
Back on.
I was an English major.
I was very good.
Okay. That's antisemitic.
Motion and a second.
Sorry, it's so late. So sorry. I'm sorry. I'm about to be kicked out. I know. Um...
You said be nice.
Do we have to, oh. I, no, we have a, we have a motion by Ms. Tabit, a second by somebody. Dr. Aga Khanian. Okay, do we vote now or after? No, we vote now. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Seeing no opposition, motion carries 5-0. I will jubilantly and thankfully, truly, accept the following gifts. Thank you to Jefferson PTA for their donation to be used towards artists to paint two buddy benches on campus at Jefferson Elementary. Thank you to Libre School Services for their donation to be used towards parking fees for the Science Center for Jefferson Elementary. Thank you to John Burrows instrumental music association Booster Club for their donation to be used towards IMA coaches at Burrows High School. Thank you to Clarine McDonald who don, for her donation of miscellaneous art supplies, including Plexiglas, mat board and thick foam poster board to be used in Beth Morrison and Karen Nakashima's art classes at Burrows High School. Thank you to the fabulous Providencia PTA for their donation to be used towards paying Gary Dance at Providencia. Thank you to Gloria Aravalo who, for her donation to be used towards outdoor science school at Providencia. Uh, thank you to the Bret Hart PTA for their donation to be used towards field trip buses at Bret Hart. Thank you to Synova to, for their donation of one mechanized screen to replace current manually operated screen to be used at Bret Hart. Thank you to the fabulous Huntington Library for their donation to be used towards field trips at Edison. Thank you to the phenomenal Emerson PTA for their donation to be used toward field trip buses at Emerson. Uh, again, thank you to Emerson PTA for their donation to be used towards the Music Center Assembly at Emerson. Thank you to Roosevelt PTA for their donation to be used towards supplies and labor costs for ceramic consultant at Roosevelt. Thank you to Charles and Diana Hirsch for their generous donation to be used towards outdoor science school at Roosevelt. Thank you to the Blackbaud Giving Fund for their donation to be used for TK Playground Equipment at Roosevelt. Thank you to American Online Giving Foundation for their donation to be used towards outdoor science school at Disney. Thank you to Huerta ASB for their donation to be used towards instrument purchases at Huerta. Thank you to Karen Escalante for her donation of 60 yoga mats to be used, uh, for physical education at McKinley. That's cool. And lastly, thank you to the Mason family on behalf of Charlie and Rory Mason for their donation of district lighting equipment to be used at McKinley Elementary. Very cool. Thank you to everybody. Every donation goes a long, long way. Thank you so much. Um, we're gonna move to 14, reports from the board. This is if anybody wants to update people on the things and the going abouts of us. Ms. Tabit.
Thank you, Dr. Weisberg. Um, one of my favorite things about Burbank Unified is our wonderful performing arts groups. And I spend a lot of time attending their performances because they're very enjoyable. Recently saw Grease. It was amazing. Um, you know what even amazes me more? That every aspect of those productions that our high schools and middle schools put on are kid-centric. They make the sets, they make, I don't know if they make the costumes, but they, they put them together. Yes. Um, everything is done with the focus on the kids participating in every aspect. From student directors to sound and lighting folks. It's amazing. So congratulations. I can't get to everything, which brings me to my ask of my board colleagues and our superintendent. I am a huge show choir follower. I love show choir. Uh, my conflict this year, uh, pop show for Burbank High is coming up next weekend. And a very close family friend, since he was eight years old, is getting married next weekend. And I have to be there, but that means I will miss the Burbank High pop show. I'm hoping somebody goes, please, and let me know who it is and I will let them know that you're attending. It's a lot of fun. It's great, great talent. So, um, Thursday and Friday night, I believe, and there might be, sometimes there's a pop, a, a matinee, but... Okay, please let me know and I will let them know. And they get so excited when folks from the district come, so. And it really is fabulous. I promise you, you won't.
No.
You'll love it. Yeah, so thank you. Uh, I think that's it. Just so you know too, when they were talking earlier about, um, girls softball, the format this year has changed. Each team in the league only plays each other one time and then they all get one round or two rounds of playoffs. So that's where they're at this currently, so we wish them the best of luck.
Any other board colleagues?
I have one, one little announcement.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So it is late and I'm not going to do this as well as I could, but having said that, I am not a dad to a, a child. Uh, but I am a dad to a pug. Um, and this pug, uh, when I'm out walking, uh, at night, that is who I'm with, my little guy. And I have to tell you, he usually takes, uh, when parents approach, he will take and hang out with the kiddos. And I will usually talk with the parents and it's a fun old time. Uh, having said that, um, re, summer reading loss is a big deal, uh, and learning loss is a big deal. And so, um, I'm actually, uh, working with, uh, Peter Knopik. We kinda came up with a, uh, summer reading club program with Mr. Winston. So, uh, just letting you know, we'll, you'll be getting an email relatively soon. I can't do that. Okay, great. Um, so, um, just explaining the program and it's, it's 10 books. Read with your kids, uh, this summer and, uh, it will be a grand old time and you'll get a chance to meet Winston. Um, and hoping this can be a bit of a board tradition with different pets, um, throughout the years to come. So I'll host it this year and maybe others will host it in the future and we'll have a good time with it. So anyway. Murray Snyderman.
Murray Snyderman, you mean? Yes, he's an avid reader.
Yes.
It's his name.
We get names right here, Ms. Tabit. Wait, you, do you prefer Charlene?
Hey, what are you doing? Don't smell that.
We need to go. We need to go.
Oh, my God.
I feel unsafe.
Okay. Do you have a report, Dr. Aga Khanian?
I was wondering what that smell was. It's this microphone. So, what, I'm sorry.
I need, I need so much. No, read, just read.
All right, uh, I do wanna acknowledge certain people for events quickly. I wanna thank the Burbank Armenian Club, Ms. Armine Minasyan, Anita Kazarian, our principal, Narnia Barzegian. I was invited to speak at the Burbank Armenian Club Armenian Heritage and Genocide Commemoration. Thank you very much. Um, I also wanna thank John Burrows Armenian Club. Um, they had a whole week of events, uh, for the Armenian genocide and the remembrance. I was also invited there and I wanna thank them as well. Uh, Ms. Balion, thank you very much for the invitation. Uh, I also wanna thank the Burbank Muck Trial Club for inviting me to their dinner celebration to talk. I also want to thank the N C A Burbank for their genocide commemoration day, right here in front of City Hall where we were represented. And I also thanked the, and if we didn't go to Family Service Agency Burbank, their annual walk, my Zonta Club was honored. Go Zantas. Of course, the Burbank P T A Fair, um, that was a great event that was called Welcome, Welcome Home Event. So thank you, P T A and all the volunteers for doing that. And then, um, I also did, uh, have the opportunity to, uh, go to Sacramento on the Armenian genocide, uh, uh, ledge day. And I want to thank all of our elected, especially our local assembly member, Laura Friedman, uh, for passing the resolution and inviting me on to the floor. I was one of the three people that was invited on the actual, the assembly floor for receiving that. And, um, that's it. Thank you very much.
Oh, no, Ms. Ponsor. It's okay. Um, okay. I've got a couple, uh, recognitions and heads up. So wanted to thank, um, the principal, Matt Osman at Roosevelt for distributing to all of us the book that they're doing for their book, uh, their family read, The Wild Robot. It's very cute. Um, it's a little dark. Um, I've been reading it to my kids. Uh, Margot skipped ahead and looked at the pictures and she was like, I don't know if I like how this book ends. So only the four-year-old and I are reading it now, um, which is fine. It's fine. Um, I want to thank, uh, our local Disney P T A. Uh, they put on a great talent show a couple of weekends ago that was, um, similar to what, uh, Ms. Tabit was saying, uh, very, uh, child run. So I think the, the kids at Huerta were helping out with sound and lights and all of that kind of stuff. We also had yell, our elementary open house last week. Um, I want to thank Burbank Arts and Ed for, um, helping with the grand opening of the Disney library. Um, it looks beautiful. Um, I also made it over to McKinley. I just, I love open house night. Um, unfortunately, this was the only one that I made it to this year. But it's just delightful. Um, I also wanted to, um, I, I completed three mock interviews this week, this week, last week with NAF students. Um, just amazing. Two of them have like real internships over the summer because they, you know, they go through and they say like, oh yeah, I'm gonna, like, let's pretend I'm applying at Taco Bell. And I'm like, okay, like I'll be the Taco Bell manager and you'll be the person applying. And then they're like, oh, but actually I have a coding internship this summer. And I'm like, oh, okay, cool. I hope this is helpful for you when you're having like a future, um, interview, doing something really awesome. But they're just great. They're great kids. Um, Staff Appreciation Week, I think, I, is, is next week. It's officially the seventh. It's at many schools all next week. Um, so if you haven't seen those things come home with your children, check them out. Um, and then the other thing that is happening next week is, um, Miller is having their multicultural night on Friday. Um, so I will be there. Armon's going to be there. Dr. Weisberg's going to be there. I'm going to bring a kid or two. We'll see how it goes. Yeah, you want, you want one of mine. But really looking forward to it, you know, I think especially in the context of tonight's discussion, it's really awesome that, that that community is coming together to celebrate differences. Thank you. Uh, quick shout out to, um, I was able to go to Disney for their fabulous library opening, echoing the thank you to B A F for, it's gorgeous. You should check it out. Um, then I went and hung out at Miller with Dr. Paramo and that was also wonderful. Got a chance to walk around the classrooms. There was one classroom in particular, and I hope we can figure out whose classroom it was, but it was like the coolest. It was the jungle and it was like dark and there were lights. It was so awesome and we couldn't even figure out who the teacher was. So, which is probably a testament to the fact that they were talking to so many other parents. Also great going to the Welcome Home Fairs, extraordinary. I'm sure it's only going to continue to grow, um, year to year. But, um, it was great to see how enthusiastic and awesome all of our various P T As were. So it was just a fun, it was a fun morning. Yeah. So we're going to, I'm going to move on now.
It's late, but I have to give Dr. Knappick credit for starting the cultural, uh, event at, well, you, me, what you, um, admire and a couple of Edison. Edison's also grown tremendously. If you've never been, started 50 people, I think 400. So thank you, Dr. Knappick, uh, for making all of this happen. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Knappick. We have one retirement. A huge thank you to Melissa McLaren, who worked in food services. She began her service in 2006. So thank you so much for everything you've done. You probably can't say this, there's a lot of wows happening right now. So it means you've made quite a positive impression on us. Um, we're going to move on to 15, the consent agenda. Does anyone have anything they want to pull? Seeing none, um, can I have a motion and a second to approve items 15 A through 15 T as presented? Everybody. Moved by Ms. Ponsor Kamkar, seconded by Ms. Tabit. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Motion carries five zero. Uh, we will be adjourning this meeting in memory of Shelley Brown at 10:38 P M.